Welcome to our second budget meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order at 5:38 PM. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you.
I will now defer the meeting to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening everyone, tonight is the second night of budget hearings. We are going to be talking to the Office of the Mayor, Office of the Business Administrator, Office of the Solicitor, Bureau of Human Resources, Bureau of Financial Management, Bureau of Communications and Bureau of Grants. So we will get things started off with the Office of the Mayor. If you just want to give us an overview of your office, any updates that you want to give us on things going on. And then I don't believe we submitted any questions to you, but if we did, you would go over those questions. If not, we will start with questions from our colleagues.
Okay, I don't have any questions, you didn't submit any questions. And the budget is as stated in the book. If there's any questions regarding any of the positions here, please let me know.
Alright, well I'll go ahead and get things started off before opening up to my colleagues. First, I'll start with the Position Control. I feel like that might be more of a technical thing. It looks like we added one position, is that correct? Or did we add three positions? Because it's showing three positions, but I believe two of them were actually added last year, but they're showing that they were not. And that will be the Special Assistant for Community Affairs and the Director of Equity and Compliance.
Yes, that's the only two, two instead of three.
So which two are added?
The Special Assistant for Community Affairs and Director of Equity and Compliance. The director was in a different budget and equity. It was under the mayor's budget.
Yes, it was under the mayor's budget last year.
Could you please speak into the microphones closely so that everybody can hear you?
You can't hear me? Oh, I don't need the mic.
No, you need the microphone for record retention, thank you.
Well, first of all, the Director of Equity and Compliance was under the mayor's office, classified and different. Under a different title, but we made him Director of Equity and Compliance because we needed that position in that particular office. What I would like to do, and I don't want to do it this year, but next year, I would like to put an affirmative action office under the mayor's office. We had two complaints that I'm a little concerning about. And I just don't want the Human Resource Director to be in conflict with the individuals who have problems with the City of Harrisburg directors.
Okay, so the Director of Equity and Compliance is a new title with the same position.
Right, and Special Assistant for the Director of Equity and Compliance, that's his assistant.
Okay. And the Special Assistant for Community Affairs, that's a new position.
Yes.
Alright, so we have two title changes and one new position?
Right. No, no, we had that in the budget last year. Special Assistant for Community Affairs. That's Gina.
Right, but it says that it's a new position.
No, 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 Gina's position is not new.
I'm just looking at the Position Control, so I'm asking for technical purposes. These are positions that were there last year.
Yes.
So they should be shown as positions.
Just reclassified, that's all.
Okay, so we just have three reclassified positions, but no new position?
Exactly. But I'm asking for one for next year, for affirmative action. And I'd like to put that under the Director of Equity and Compliance, instead of putting it under Bureau of Human Resources.
Not in this budget?
No, not in this budget.
That's something, okay, looking forward, alright.
Well, you said if I had any questions or concerns, and that was a concern that I think we, the City of Harrisburg needs to have.
Okay. This is a follow-up, any reason why we don't want it this year?
We don't have the funding for that position.
Alright. Another question that I had was, there's a line item for Miss Lane is contracted services, I believe it is. Or contracted services for $56,290. Can we just get an overview of what those funds are, what the contracted services we're looking at in the mayor's office?
I don't have my glasses on. Hold up, I'm trying to have my glasses on.
I guess just maybe an overview of what contracted services you're looking at.
Okay, Miss Lane, contracted services, I increased the memberships because of the fact that we have to pay National League of Cities. And we've taken on that membership. And also the mayor's association.
And I'll add with that, one of the big issues is with the jump up in census numbers. By 50,000 is the number at which rates can go up for membership, so we had to account for that within the budget.
Okay, I think that's just about all the questions, I have just one that's not, I don't think exactly for you, but it's for your office. I know last year when we added the position for Mr. Singleton, he said that he'd be willing to come down and give us updates on what was going on with some of the things that he was doing with some of the equity roundtables and things like that. I don't think we really had many updates. Is that something that we can look to put dates on the board for? And also if he'd have some time to come and give us some updates?
He's here right now, and he can do that right now, Mr. Singleton. Andrea, where's your glasses? I left mine upstairs. Your glasses? Oh, you don't have them here. This is so small, I can't see.
Good evening, Mr. Singleton, or Director Singleton.
Good job, you've been a very promising position, I think the mayor would approve of you.
Welcome to our second budget meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order at five thirty eight P M. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Miss Daniels?
Here.
Miss Green?
Present.
Mister Madison?
Here.
Mister Majors?
Here.
Miss Ross?
Present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
Miss Bowers?
Present, thank you. I will now defer the meeting to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the second night of budget hearings. We are going to be talking to the Office of the Mayor, Office of the Business Administrator, Office of the Solicitor, Bureau of Human Resources, Bureau of Financial Management, Bureau of Communications, and Bureau of Grants. So we will get things started off with the Office of the Mayor. If you just want to give us an overview of your office, any updates that you want to give us on things going on? And then I don't believe we submitted any questions to you, but if we did, you would go over those questions. If not, we will start with questions from our colleagues, so.
Okay, I don't have any questions. You didn't submit any questions, and the budget is as stated from the book, in the book. If there's any questions regarding what, any of the positions here, please let me know.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and get things started off before opening up to my colleagues. First, I'll start with the position control. I feel like that might be more of a technical thing. It looks like we added one position, is that correct? Or do we add three positions? Because it's showing three positions, but I believe two of them were actually added last year, but they're showing that they were not. And that will be the Special Assistant for Community Affairs and the Director of Equity and Compliance.
Yes, that's the only two, two instead of three.
So which, which two are added?
The Special Assistant for Community Affairs and Director of Equity and Compliance. The director was in a different budget in equity and. It was in, it was in the mayor's, under the mayor's budget.
Yes, it was under the mayor's budget last year.
Could you please speak into the microphones closely so that everybody can hear?
Oh, I can, well, I don't need the mic.
No, you need the microphone for record retention, thank you.
Well, first of all, the Director of Equity and Compliance was under the mayor's office, classified and different, under a different title, but we made him Director of Equity and Compliance because we needed that position in that particular office. What I would like to do, and I don't want to do it this year, but next year, I would like to put affirmative action office in the, under the mayor's office. We've had two complaints that I'm a little concerning about, and I just don't want the Human Resource Director to be in conflict with the individuals who have problems with the City of Harrisburg directors.
Okay, so the Director of Equity and Compliance is a new title with the same position?
Right, and Special Assistant for the Director Equity and Compliance, that's his assistant.
Okay. And the Special Assistant for Community Affairs, that's a new position?
Yes.
All right, so we have two title changes and one new position?
Right. No, no, we had that in the budget last year. Special Assistant for Community Affairs. That's Gina.
Right, but it says that it's a new position.
No, 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 Gina's position is not new.
I'm, I'm just looking at the position control, so I'm asking for technical purposes. These are positions that were there last year.
Yes.
So they should be shown as positions.
Just reclassified, that's all.
Okay, so we just have three reclassified positions, but no new position?
No. But I'm asking for one for next year, for affirmative action. And I'd like to put that under the Director of Equity and Compliance, instead of putting it under Bureau of Human Resources.
Not in this budget?
No, not in this.
Okay, that, that would be, that's something, okay, looking forward, all right.
Well, you said if I had any questions or concerns, and that was a concern that I think we, the City of Harrisburg needs to have.
Okay. This is a follow-up, any reason why we don't want it this year?
We don't have the funding for that position.
All right. Another question that I had was, there's a line item for Miss Lane is contracted services, I believe it is, or contracted services for fifty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. Can we just get an overview of what those funds are, what the contracted services we're looking at in the mayor's office?
I don't have my glasses on. Hold up, I should have my glasses on.
I guess just maybe an overview of what contracted services you're looking at.
Okay, Miss Lane, contracted services, I increased the memberships because of the fact that we have to pay National League of Cities, and we've taken on that membership. And also the mayor's, the mayor's association.
And I'll, I'll add with that, one of the big issues is with the jump up in census numbers. By fifty thousand is the number at which rates can go up for membership, so we had to account for that within the budget.
Okay, I think that's just about all the questions I have, just one that's not, I don't think exactly for you, but it's for your office. I know last year, when, when we added the position for Mister Singleton, he said that he'd be willing to come down and give us updates on what was going on with some of the things that he was doing with some of the equity roundtables and things like that. I don't think we really had many updates. Is that something that we can look to put dates on the board for? And also if he'd have some time to come and give us some updates?
He's here right now, and he can do that right now, Mister Singleton. Hey, Andre, where's your glasses? I left mine upstairs. This is so small, I can't see.
Good evening, Mister Singleton, or Director Singleton.
Best practices to help the city direct policy, practice, and procedures that ultimately will turn into legislation or ordinance that will be sent down from the mayor's administration down for your consideration. So to date, one of the things that we ran concurrent with was having these meetings again since March eighth, at which point professionals got together from Harrisburg Regional Chamber in Creedick to the school district, to the county, and other members, UPMC, Penn State Harrisburg, Penn State Health, I'm sorry, and others, where we decided that one of the things that we needed to do was make sure that public health was addressed. So one of the things we're working towards is ensuring that there's a report out. Those recommendations are still forthcoming. We've asked that the, that the committees give us something in, right, we have a draft proposal in terms of the recommendations to the mayor, but we have not had that final meeting from each committee to say, here are the recommendations to the mayor for her consideration that she would like to see moving forward in terms of how administration runs. However, we continue to meet ongoing. There's, again, various members, some represented here that have participated in the meetings, meaning on council and in the community. And I guess one of the steps that have grown out of this is we've become a member of Cities United, again. That was one of the trips that I've been on down to the Baltimore area where we can have technical assistance on a, on a national level to address the public health crisis of black male homicides. There's also an opportunity for us to develop under the mayor's leadership as we move towards considering the Health Department here in the City of Harrisburg. There's also an opportunity for us to start working more closely together with Harrisburg School District and the county around equitable access to contracting opportunities, meaning the minority women business enterprises engagement, and that's hence the disparity study. As I stated from the onset, one of the only reasons that I was brought on was, you know, from, because of my background in terms of ensuring equitable inclusivity of those underserved and underrepresented and under-resourced individuals and businesses. I'm proud to say that the disparity study is in hand. How we move forward from this point is going to be up to the mayor and council in being in agreement to talk about how we're intentioned about making sure we are unapologetic when it comes to making sure we are distributing our resources from a city standpoint in the most equitable economical way. And so that is something that I'm going to continue to push, whether I'm in this position or outside of this position. Those of you here, you know this is nothing new. And so I thank the mayor again for this opportunity to serve in this capacity. Moving forward, those four committees that I spoke of, we've decided to, moving forward into twenty twenty-three, since the disparity study is in hand, that we're going to collapse those positions, I'm sorry, those committees from four to two. So it makes sense to go from four to two in that we're going to take, she likes it too, I agree. And so we're going to go from four to two in that we are going to move the Workforce and Education Committee into one, we're going to unify that, and we're going to ensure that the law and justice in, in Health Committee, so we can really have a robust understanding of what goes on from a mental and public health perspective as it relates to law, equity, and injustice, injustice, I should say. So as of right now, I think that's an overview, if there is specificity in terms of questions. I will go back, let me go back one. Mister Collins, who's been recently brought on over the last month and a half, two months, we've worked diligently, and he's called on very quickly as the assistant in the office in which we've developed a spreadsheet to track how we're spending money as a city monthly. And so I do have those numbers, and you can see where from the onset, we started off at an abysmal point because for two reasons. One was we didn't really track properly our, our spend and identify minority women-owned business enterprises. And the second was we weren't talking, quite frankly, interdepartmentally, and I don't mean only under this administration, I mean historically, which we can all agree on. And so knowing where we are now, having a solid foundation in terms of where we currently sit with our monthly spend, which we get thanks to Brian, Mister Brian McCutcheon in apartment under Mister Marita Kelly, they provide our office with weekly, I'm sorry, with monthly reports in terms of the total spend down to the penny in terms of what goes out in regards to the City of Harrisburg. And from there, Mister Collins and I, we disaggregate that in a way where we say, here are the minority business enterprises that are on our list, here's where we spent the money, and then from there, we get the, the percentage of spend per month with minority women owned and controlled businesses. So that's a brief overview and update to, to date.
Thank you very much for that information. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're tracking our spend and holding ourselves accountable, because I think that's really important. I'd love to see those numbers and see that comparison to where we started, to where we are now. Because I think that kind of gives us some of that quantitative evidence of which direction we're moving in. Also, I think it'd be great for, for the public to be able to see that, to see that we are holding ourselves accountable, and we're being true to what we're saying, it's not just, you know, a conversation, it's, it's action behind it, so. I'd love to, if you would be able to send that over to us, I'd be very much appreciated. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues now for any questions for the mayor's office. I'm going to start to my far right here with Councilman Rouse, Ross.
Thank you, you're fine.
Ross, there we go.
You're fine, thank you, Vice President Green, and good evening, Mister Singleton, thank you for coming. And thank you for doing the disparity study and starting to form groups. And I agree with Vice President Green, if we could see the, the numbers you got from the study, the information you got from it, that would be great, just so we're all on the same page, and then just let us know where you're going with it. That would just be excellent, but thank you.
So, this is a team effort, in particularly the disparity study that was funded through Impact Harrisburg, the City Harrisburg, as well as the county, under the mayor's leadership. And the other pieces regarding the, the numbers that I spoke of, the monthly numbers, they're not disparity study numbers. There are internal numbers that we're tracking through our due diligence as you, in, in terms of the administration. Although the disparity study is out there.
Okay, so is it like two separate things, so is there a disparity study, and then there's?
Right.
Numbers? Or what's happening within the City of Harrisburg?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
Are we able to get both research pieces, just to?
I was under the impression that you already had a copy of the disparity study. Okay, all right, okay, so, yes.
You didn't receive a copy of the disparity study because we have to get with Impact Harrisburg and the commissioners, because some of the data that's in that study, we had some questions about. And I was waiting for Commissioner Priest to come back from his vacation.
Okay, all right, I understand.
To be fair to everyone, because they haven't had an opportunity to look at this.
To look at it themselves.
So I want to be fair. Now, when you talk about the internal numbers, that's beginning when I came into office, we were not keeping a track of, of, you know, the number of contracts that will run out of there. So that's why Mister Singleton has been brought in, because now we have an accounting of what contracts come in and what's given to MBE and WBE involved.
Right.
On another note, I, I have to say Mister Singleton has been doing a great job, because now the Pennsylvania Municipal League has asked him to sit on some of the panels, and so he will be a part of that panels and involved in the diversity, equity, inclusion.
I'm happy to hear that.
Yes.
That's, that's great news, a seat at the table.
Yeah, he's going to represent me this, Thursday and Friday at cities and state locals.
Well, that's excellent news, well, I, we all look forward to seeing the, the, you know, the studies, both of them, once they are allowed to be released, so just thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, Mayor Williams, for bringing Mister Singleton on, creating the position and allowing, you know, him to, to do this work that he's very passionate about, so, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Councilman Madison.
Uh, thank you, so, first question, just to piggyback on the diversity study, is there any preliminary findings that are interesting of note, or just out of curiosity?
Nothing that would, you know, cause us to have some concern about, it's just some concern about, what are the things that I had questions about, no one was able to answer for the company that did the study? Because I wanted to know where they, you know, tracked their information, where there was an area where they didn't get information from, and I thought it was important as far as where's it sits in the seat of Harrisburg, which located, that no one was interviewed. And given, you know, given in, there's no data in that particular area.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to wait before I gave you the study, because I had questions to the company about how they obtained that information. If I have six hundred people in this particular district, and out of that six hundred, not one of them was given an interview about anything as far as disparity.
Wow. And obviously, Mayor, you'll be familiar with this, what I'm maybe fishing for is, I'm really interested because federal courthouse, when it came, the conversation about more inclusion there.
Well, there was no inclusion.
Right.
And sitting at the table, I was sitting at the table, there was no inclusion whatsoever.
Right. There, and the big thing we kept hearing is, well, you know, you don't necessarily have the workforce that has the skill sets for this. Heard that in Congressman Perry's office.
But we do have the workforce.
Okay, and the study shows that?
Well, some, some areas.
Okay. Well, I'm looking forward to reading.
Okay.
Working on those things.
Get a copy, since we have the meeting, I'll make sure everyone gets a copy.
This may be more of an H R question, but since we were talking about equity in the workspace, are, are we doing exit interviews? If someone leaves your office, do we, do we have a conversation? Talk about?
Johnny does do exit interviews.
It's completely voluntary, but yeah, those are done for people that are willing to do them.
Okay, and from the ones in the last year that have been willing to do it, there are common that you're willing to comfortably share theme that we're hearing, is it stress over work, or?
Joni, Joni's here tonight, she'll.
She'll be able to give you that information, and now taking consideration now, some of those that did exit came back already.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, some of them.
So they boomerang.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, we'll look forward to some of those questions with Joni, and thank you so much, that's it for me.
Thank you. Sure.
We highlight the federal courthouse, and a lot of us are sitting here. The bottom line is the federal courthouse was defined in terms of minority business inclusivity from a federal level.
Right.
So their definition of regional was not our definition of regional. So we, as elected officials and leaders in the community, dropped the ball on that when we allow their plan to come through. So it was too late, once we realized that they were bringing in and defining a regional from a geographic, a United States geographical perspective, meaning northeastern region, and we're thinking Dolphin County, and, you know, et cetera, so we weren't, we weren't thinking large enough, we weren't out ahead of it, and so we truly missed a, a, a large opportunity there, agreeable. But moving forward, again, under the mayor's leadership, that's part of the reason why there's certain things in, in place now, so that we are intentional about ensuring that we are on top of, you know, even if it's same, public-private partnerships, the P three models that we know of, that we still can be instrumental in articulating from a large microphone, the mayor's office, the capital city of the Commonwealth, that we are intentional about seeing equitable inclusivity, no matter where public, no matter what dollars are being spent, public and or private. Not that we can control private, just to be honest, just point of clarification.
Yeah, just benefit of the public, I remember Steve Lee in one of those meetings, when they, people pointed and said, oh, look at all these local firms, and they were in York or Maryland, and like, what are you talking about? And, yeah, they explained that we meant Harrisburg basically.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers, any questions?
Thank you. I, maybe some comments, a question, I think, for the mayor. Mayor Williams, you mentioned the three reclassifications within your office. Have any duties or responsibilities changed? I guess I'm just curious what precipitated the reclassification.
Yes, of course, as Director of Equity and Compliance, that's Mister Singleton and his assistant, and then Special Assistant for Community Affairs is Miss Roberson.
I understand, but I want, I was curious if, if any of their duties or responsibilities changed.
I think it's not so much it's changed, it's how much, you know, volume of work that she has done. We've become a community-based officer in the, in the mayor's office, and we've handled over two hundred and twenty-five different calls from, from the citizens out here and the public, and she was able to redirect them to the responsible parties that they needed to get the information to, are some assistance.
So with the reclassifications, I guess I will ask Human Resources, if any of the job descriptions have changed, I think that's what I'm trying to. Okay.
There's more duties, that's all.
Okay. And then Mister Singleton, once the Equity Roundtable data and final report are compiled, I'd love for you to come back and to share during a communications portion of our meeting, so maybe sometime at the beginning of the year, if you expect to have the information before the end of the year, or whenever you, when everything is finalized.
Sure, I'll just, you know, again, wait for the mayor's direction on that, and it will be in hand, so when those report, we can release it simultaneously.
Okay.
With regards to the disparity study as well, because they were, they were meant to be timed together, as you know, being a part of the committee, to be timed to be released, so they run parallel, not that one influences the other, but just to show how, I mean, there's nothing new under the sun, we know historically, we have not done well with minority women-owned business engagement, I mean, that's not a secret. So the law says we need a legally defensible document to prove what it is that we already said, that we are, what we already know, and so this is what we've done.
Right. Now, with the spending, the monthly spending data that you're compiling, I guess what is the long-term goal with that information?
And is running parallel, again, it is to encourage, under the mayor's direction, our directors to be more intentional in terms of equitable spending of our public dollars with minority business enterprises being engaged. There's no secret about that, that's what I'm here for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Thank you. So, a-again, I'm, I'm looking at the proposed budget from last year and what's in this year, I'm, I'm still a little confused. The budget, as Care Green had mentioned previously, the, what we, what we show as adopted was three positions in terms of the position control. Says it's proposed as six, but when I'm looking at the document from twenty twenty-two that was approved, we have six positions in that document, that's on the city website. So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm reading all this information correctly in terms of the number of positions. And then in addition, some of the the overall management cost numbers differ, which in terms of what was listed here as adopted versus what is listed here as adopted, so that's where I'm just, I'm, I'm just getting a little confused.
You shouldn't be confused, you're aware of it. I'm sorry, forgive me. When we came here last year, I mean, this year, early part of this year, we, we had requested these positions. We, in fact, told you that we needed these additional positions when we came before, when we had to do a budget, which was not done. And now you're, you're asking why we are adopting these additional three positions?
I think the question is.
The question is, are, are we talking about, right, I'm not, because.
I know.
Right, they were all there in twenty twenty-two, so, but it's saying you're proposing, it's saying was adopted with three. And, and the document, I mean, I'm not, I mean, everyone has these. And, and the docu, I mean, I'm not, I mean, everyone has these documents in front of them.
Yeah, we have a document in front of us.
Proposed as six, right, so that's why the position control just seems a little bit off, and then we're adding. An additional position here in terms of the special assistants at the director of equity and compliance.
That wasn't added, it wasn't filled last year. I think those are the, what was adopted here, I, I think some of them are errors. But we did discuss an assistant at la, at the beginning of the year. It, it was not filled until a month or a month and a half ago, it was recently filled, but we did discuss that position. So perhaps this.
I think part of the question is that it's showing that the Director of Equity and Compliance is a new position. It was in last year's budget.
Right.
So it's not a new position.
No.
So it, it needs to be changed to say that.
Right, that's, yeah.
It needs to be changed to say that it was one last year, it was one last year.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And for several positions, that's the case, so we just want to make sure the position controls are showing the positions were there last year. Because if you look at it, these are new positions.
No, they're not.
But they're not new positions.
No, they're all, they were here last year. Or this year, the beginning of this year, because we didn't do a budget last year. We had the budget done this year.
For the twenty twenty.
I'm sorry, not last year, twenty twenty-two budget. So I'll, I'll correct myself, the twenty twenty-two budget that's listed as. I'm, I'm not upset, I'm just trying to be, be clear, the twenty twenty-two approved budget that's listed on the city's website mentions.
Well, it's just a clarification, I mean, just a correction, I'm sorry, correction. There are, the, all the positions were adopted.
I might add that there was a budget reallocation to properly fund special assistant. Um, to um Director of Equity and Compliance, if you recall, I think it would have been mid-year. And then it took him some time, and, and he did a marvelous job um evaluating clients, or I'm sorry, candidates. And, and he came upon the best candidate he could possibly find, so. I will add that that was not funded in the mayor's office, that particular position, it was um, it was funded through uh. The Social Equity Office, which had some funding, and, and maybe even through the Clean Development Director, so it was a re, it was a reallocation, I don't have the specifics, but. But just so you know, that, that, that uh special assistant to the uh Director of Equity and Compliance was not um in the budget, it was funded later in the reallocation.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Remember discussing it earlier this year, but thank you, thanks for clarifying.
And that's.
Right.
And, and that's what I was stating, you know, to.
Okay.
To majors.
Right, no, I, I agree, and again, again, it's just in terms of what we're talking about. Oh, nevermind, I won't, oh, I, I, I won't even go there. You know what, I will, I will not have any additional questions at this time.
All right, I will just note, if we can make sure that um, maybe if we can get a, a, a fresh copy of this position control page. With the corrections. Um, and if there is a title change, if we can leave the old title in there and show that that position is removed, and that the new title is a position. That way it clearly shows if there was any changes in the, in the mayor's office. Uh, because right now it's saying that there were only three people there, now there are six people there. Um, when we know that's not the case, so if we can just get that clearly listed for clarification purpose.
Taking the. Amendment, and we'll make sure you get the appropriate. My apologies for you.
Councilwoman Daniels, any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think you all covered a lot of it, there are a lot of typos on that initial page, it has the wrong year and simple things like that.
Okay.
But um, I don't know who this question is for, whether it's for Mr. Singleton, uh, Wanda Williams, or it's this solicitor.
It's Mayor Williams.
Um.
Mayor Williams.
Who?
Mayor Williams.
Who is doing the Human Relations Commission work, like accepting?
What, Daniels? Daniels what? Now Mayor Williams and your uh Councilwoman Daniels, okay? Let's give respect where respect is due.
Um, so that, that work, or is that situated at this moment?
Complaints come to the Law Bureau. Uh, which was, we had overseen the prior uh person who did that job. And so they came to the Law Bureau, uh, my senior deputy uh was handling it until uh. Um, he departed, we've had a total of two complaints this year for the year, and um. Neither has materialized into anything. Like when we respond, like we, we send out a notice when we get them, and we have to get a response back, and then the applicant didn't respond. Which is not unusual for that office, what happens very often is they confuse us with the Pennsylvania Relations Commission. And think they're following up with their prior complaint there. And so they reach out to us with a complaint, but it, it, they already have a complaint elsewhere.
So uh, so that's in terms of the complaints, but in terms of staff? Which staff is handling that commission meeting?
They'll say that the way the ordinance is written. It actually, from my view, is a very badly written ordinance. It mandates in the ordinance how many members constitute a quorum. They don't have that many members anymore, so they cannot meet. So they have not met in months and months and months, because they don't have a quorum. I don't know, since sometime in the spring. Stephen was going to those meetings as liaison, uh, the chairman resigned, and I forget if it was May, and uh.
So we have a quasi judicial.
Well, for one, it was defunct for many years.
It's not.
It was defunct for many years, I went back and looked, they have actually never held a hearing that board. So they've, a, a quasi judicial board that existed never had an actual hearing, they had two paid staffers for years. Who did investigations, but the board itself had never had an actual hearing, as far as we can tell from the records.
So is there any?
That is an issue for the mayor and council together.
We, we're really, you know, fairly functioning. And that's, that's really it. That's a.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, Councilman Rodriguez, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair Green, um, thank you to the administration for being here this evening, uh, Director Singleton, Madam Mayor. I had a few questions relevant to the disparity study, so I do look forward to the results, either preliminary or the actual report. Um, if Madam Mayor feels some of it wasn't executed correctly, I want to definitely look into that and see where they dropped the ball at with that, interested in that. Um, and Madam Mayor, you were saying they didn't uh specifically interview anyone from the targeted area, from the demographic the report was supposed to.
No, and that's what I was concerned about.
Okay, okay.
Especially in the Democratic area that um really is concerning, has a large population.
Okay, so the voice of the people that it was supposed to even study to begin with, didn't even get a chance to ex, exercise their voice. Um, what challenges do you feel for the coming fiscal year that you would face? And if any, how does your team feel they can get over that? Great answer.
I think we're gonna do great.
Okay, great answer.
We're in great shape, and we've been, you know, doing well and controlling our spending.
Awesome, um, Director Singleton, thank you for joining us.
Sorry.
Oh, for the, I, that's for the uh people at home, if you wanted to repeat that, I heard you, um, but just for the record.
You had to hear me and everybody else.
I guess the question was just about the uh, the study. Uh, about the, um, I guess the ones executing the study and not recording the voice of the demographic that the study was supposed to reflect.
But that was a concern.
Yep.
And you know, you and I can speak about that privately.
Absolutely, um, Director Singleton, about the committees, is there any openings um for the public? And if so, how do they get appointed, or how can they participate?
And there's plenty, when you, so let's not insinuate that none of the public, this is not a closed thing.
Right.
So there are public members um that are public citizens living in the city of Harrisburg that are on a committee. That also have jobs in the various fields that I've named, health, education, uh, law and justice, and or uh workforce. And so there is well represented at it from a s, local, state and federal level. So um, I could give you a list of who's on there, if there's.
If there was anyone interested in there were openings, how could someone?
Oh, like, just reach out, if this is something that's interesting, um, in terms of equity in those cer, in those um two, or is really four spheres right now? As well, but we just want to have them collapse into two different uh committees.
Okay.
Feel free to r, reach out, uh, two five five three zero one six is the assistant uh up in the Chief Equity and Compliance Office. And my direct dial is two five five three zero one five.
Awesome, thank you for that, it's, your work's important, and making sure the revenue remains equitable for MBEW businesses, it's amazing, so thank you. Um, and then, I guess Madam Mayor, the only other question I would have is, as we gear towards the end of the year. Um, I did get an update from Mr. Hartman that we'll be meeting uh about CLIA, about Bill eight twenty twenty, I believe. Um, is there any idea on appointments um coming up, or do you have an idea of maybe first quarter or end of the year to form that board?
You have an appointments on that board as well.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So we'll work together on that.
We, we have our appointments made, I just, we were waiting on the administration.
I'm gonna be nice, because I sent appointments down for, in May, for to be on the board, and then it didn't get, you know, it wasn't on the agenda till November.
Okay.
I'm not gonna send any more appointments down if they're gonna sit and waiting, because then the people who are interested in serving. And it's their time that they're willing to give to us, you know, wait for two and three months and do not get an interview.
I feel the same way.
About that.
Absolutely.
But I will send the additional names down, but I did not realize that you had your appointments.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I hadn't made your team aware, we've done that since February.
Okay.
I feel the same way, we've had a few on standby, we just want to call and ensure they're still interested, um, but we're ready whenever you are. Thank you, Madam Mayor, no further questions.
I have quite, quite a few resumes, so I did not, I wasn't aware that you have. You know, e, elected or selected your individuals for that particular board.
Yeah, I believe we were in touch with your team, um, but I look forward to definitely working together on that, thank you.
Okay.
No further questions.
I do have one, one more question before, or ask any, anyone else if they have any. Um, you mentioned about adding an affirmative action.
Um, next year.
Right, for next year. Um, last year, if I recall in the budget, we had a social equity and affirmative action office, so we got rid, did we get rid of that entire office this year?
The former mayor did that, I think when uh Miss, Lady Deb left, he got rid of that, he never filled that position.
I remember the office was still there, there were still positions in the office, I believe Mr. Singleton's position.
Right.
Was originally in that office, and you moved it under the mayor's office.
Budget coding and everything's still there, it's just sitting dormant, could be reacted.
All right.
I mean, if you want to react it now, it's fine with me, because like I said, you know, the coding's there, we just got to get the funding for that position.
All right, uh, any other questions for my colleagues?
Yes, I, I guess I have a question about a follow-up to that, so. The individual that you're speaking of, she was the EEO officer, is that correct? Okay, so.
So did, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I, I think, I guess that's the one I remember that she wore. Um, okay, and then my next question is, and I will ask this of Human Resources as well. But all of the employees in your office, Mayor, directly received a performance evaluation for this year?
No, we did not do a performance evaluation yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Major, any questions?
Matter of fact, we didn't do any, no one did a performance evaluation to my knowledge, did they? No, nobody. None of the directors are given a performance evaluation, we were concerned about that, that application and the process that we'd used. We were supposed to be looking into that, matter of fact, as council members last year.
Okay, I know it's something that we've discussed over a few budget cycles now, so I wasn't sure if it had been rectified, so. Okay, so these increases that are listed are based on?
Some of the additional work that they've been doing.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. And I just want to make a statement before, you know, if you're finished with me, council members.
The, there were still uh questions or comments, anyone else with questions or comments, Councilman Majors?
Yes, uh, just one, so, uh, this is either directed to Mr. Singleton or the mayor. In terms of the mayor's equity roundtable. Uh, you mentioned about the members, is that list of members public, or is it listed on any of our public websites?
Uh, Penn Live is a part of it as well, they, they published it when we initially kicked it off.
No, no, I'm asking if it's on a city website, so, because if I go, if I look on the city's website now, would I find the list of members?
I don't believe, I don't believe it is, I don't believe it is.
Okay.
If that's something you like, there's no problem.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think for. I mean, that's at the discretion of the mayor, so my personal opinion on that is.
I'm curious.
My discretion, but if he would want.
To me, to me, for transparency purposes, I think if you're gonna have a roundtable, we're gonna have a roundtable that the mayor is. I think that at least listing those names of those members on the city's website would be something so the public knew um who those members are.
Okay, that's fine.
I guess I assume that the report published and the findings would then include them, all of the members, and that would, the report would be on the website. I guess that's what I was thinking, is that what you guys were, were thinking would, okay?
Yeah, I agree, but in lieu of having that information available to us at this point, I think, just having that.
Um, then to your point, it was not published on ours, I don't believe, I believe. Uh, Matt, uh, Mr. Mizell, Communication Director, may have reported out on it as well as, you know, Penn Live. Um, but short of that, you're right, I mean, so this is another post, no big deal.
No, and then the other two, other questions that I did have were already asked and answered, so.
Okay.
No further questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank none, thank you, Mayor, if you have any other comments or uh information you'd like to share with us, we would appreciate it. Um, if not, I believe the only thing that, that we ask for as far as follow-up.
Yes, I would ask that, um, you know, um, Councilwoman, um, Daniels. If she would like to interact with me on a personal level, then she would address me as mayor, if not, then don't address me as anything, don't talk to me, don't ask me any questions. Then make those questions go through the council president or the vice president, because I give respect, and I expect it back. So I want to make sure I put that on record.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, as far as follow-up from the mayor's office, I believe the only thing we are waiting for, or that we requested, was uh the. Information from Mr. Singleton as far as the minority business spending. Um, if you could just email that to us, I think that's the only follow-up we ask for.
Yeah, a corrected page.
Corrected.
Yes, the, yeah, the corrected.
It's page sixty-eight for everybody's reference, page sixty-eight. But I, I would also like to request, since we don't have performance evaluations completed. And. While there are additional responsibilities for the three reclassifications. I think that something should be noted in writing.
I don't have a problem doing that.
Either.
Do you want me to send that to you?
Either updating the job descriptions to include the additional responsibilities. Or uh resharing everyone's resumes, but something, since we don't have a performance evaluation to justify these increases.
Same, we need to do a performance evaluation for all the employees in the city of Harrisburg, we need to sit down and do that. Because, you know, we cannot can just justify, in my office, I don't have a problem with doing that, but when we did that last year to look at salaries. And job descriptions, we didn't get accurate accounting. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but we did receive that from that company. So if you, you're asking for my uh team to do that, I would ask that all the.
Well, I was, I said that I will address it with Human Resources, I'm a firm believer, as I have been since I became a member of this council. That performance evaluations are. Incredibly important for employees, the lifespan of their career. Um, it, it's a nice record to have in their file. So that they can grow. And continue to prosper, whether that's in their current role or in a future role. So I will always be an advocate of performance evaluation, thank you.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure we get those, but as I stated, I just want to make sure everybody does that, all the employees. And in that case, then I need to put something in an executive order to call, everyone gets a performance evaluation. And accordingly to how their interpersonal relationships are with, with their supervisor and directors, sometimes, sometimes that can be off base. Because that employee could be excelling, but because of relationship, personal relationship, they may not give them an accurate accounting of their performance, so I do have.
Well, generally, the employee also does a self-evaluation along with their supervisors.
We had the, I don't think we had a self-evaluation page, did we? We had the, I don't think we had a self-evaluation page. Did we? They responded yes or no and then give an explanation, but we did not have.
Okay, well, we'll ask when she can come to the microphone so that everybody can hear. But I do think it's definitely something that um I think would be helpful to look into.
That's fine.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
And lastly, I I I will note since I did ask the question, there is a uh a press release on the city's website. That has a list of all of the members of the mayor's equity roundtable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor's office?
Thank you very much, President.
Dingun, thank you for being here tonight and uh you have a great night.
I'm staying.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Need to stay.
All right, let's see who's up next. Next, we have the Office of the Business Administrator. If you could just give us a brief introduction about your office, any updates or anything that you wanna let us know? And then if we have had any pre responded questions to you, uh for you, if you could um answer those or or read those answers out and then we'll. Go down the line again.
Perfect. Uh Office of Business Administrator is made up of myself and Deborah Robinson, my special assistant, uh two-person operation. Uh primarily, we've been filling a lot of gaps on projects. I know Deb has been handling some investigation sort of stuff, helping HR. Uh and Neil's office on complaints using her HR background. Uh primarily been focused uh this year on the financial side of things and improving the inter. Working relationships between the departments, um which were very, very frayed. Uh when we got here, there were a lot of vacancies, a lot of openings, a lot of barriers that were put up. A lot of work's been done in breaking those barriers down. Um as it relates to the budget for uh this year. Um the mayor, uh as she stated, she went through uh on the management side uh and selected raises. So there's a raise uh associated uh for both Deb and myself through there. Um the big numbers that jump out, well, big relative, I have a relatively small budget uh as it pertains to the other ones. Uh you'll see uh the consulting line is up to sixty thousand dollars. That is where the line item for lobbying would be paid out of. Uh so for the upcoming year, uh the plan is, is Neil's office is drafting RFP language to go out. The mayor has made it known that she would like between the administration and the council to have the RFP scored. And then obviously that process publicly be taken to council here. Um with the change in administration, uh the change in uh just the numbers and the faces in the legislature. Um the mayor considered it uh an important thing to have in the uh the upcoming year budget. We had a lot of, a lot of great work done. On the grant side and then the the inside lobbying from here over there, but with all the new players in there. It will uh really, really help the city uh to keep that uh that success going. And having a lobbyist is gonna be a huge uh component of doing that. So that's sixty thousand is directly associated to that. Um like I said, Neil is working on the RFP language and the member um has asked a group to come to score it, including a member of council. Um the other, the other bump ups there are associated with travel and conferences. There is a group. Uh of business administrators throughout the state that uh we meet virtually now, but we're going to be doing. Uh meetings collectively. Uh so we might go to Erie, we might go to Allentown. Uh so travel associated to that, uh not a huge, not a huge amount. Uh that's directly uh tied to that. I also can use that as discretionary money uh to send people. Uh if there's a particular uh. Subject, like one of the things right now is on the auditing and accounting side that all the other cities are interested in. It's something I could use that line item to send somebody like Mr. McCutcheon or Ms. Kelly uh to a meeting there. Um that makes up two thousand and one thousand. Uh then the other thing is is a fifteen hundred dollar increase in office supplies. Uh we're dwindling down what we have, making sure we're not stockpiling things. Uh but certain, certain items are getting low. Within, within what we have there. I was told I needed to put that money in there by my special assistant or else she was gonna pop me over the head. So uh I I listened to her on that. So that makes up what those increases are. Like I said, the driver is, is that increase in. Sixty thousand for lobbying. Uh and that's a process that, once the budget passes and if if that's kept in there. Will obviously be a a public process through RFP um that you'll be heavily involved in.
All right, thank you very much. I don't have any questions at the moment. I will open it up to my colleagues, starting at my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Um I have uh no real questions. Um I just wanted to see with Ms. Deb's new role, if she had time to answer. Uh just wanted to find out how the new role's going and if she foresees any challenges coming in the near future. Good evening, Ms. Robinson. How you doing? I just wanted to um with your first year in, uh how's things going and do you foresee any challenges coming up in the near?
There's a lot of challenges that's coming on.
Excuse me, I don't think the microphone is on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Um. Um. One thing is that I'm noticing there are a lot of uh employee relation issues. Um so far, I'm, I'm right now, I'm working on my fifth one, which is very intense. Having the HR background and the EEO background. Um I agree. With President Bowers, that performance evaluations are very important.
Absolutely.
Because if you're now complaining about someone's work performance, I need to see. Why after five years, ten years, it's an issue.
Absolutely.
This point. And so, yes, the performance evaluation, you know, is a major piece. Um the other thing is, you know, you have to interview people. Uh I'm about getting jobs for people. And helping people retain their jobs, not about losing their jobs, especially after so many years of service. And um so I interview a lot of other people to make sure. That I'm getting as much information as possible, you know, before I make a recommendation.
Absolutely.
So that has been uh a challenge. Uh the other thing is we've had a changeover uh with the mayor's executive assistant. So I was sort of uh a backup and so now I'm helping the new EA. Get acclimated, you know, into the system. Uh the adopting a lot uh program has been a little intense. Because we have developers who are purchasing properties that were formerly adopted. And then also when they adopt a lot, they're given a lease. And um the solicitor, Neil Rover, um he was concerned about the usage of the word lease. You know, reverses with them adopting a lot. So we're looking at the lease contract as well. So uh that's been pretty uh challenging as well. Um the other thing is depend, when the mayor meets with the community on Fridays. Depending upon the nature of the meeting and because of my social services background. Oftentimes, I sit in with her, you know, in the meetings.
Absolutely.
So um there's a lot.
Awesome. And then out of the, you were on number five, so out of the four, um how do you feel mediation has gone with the employee relations?
Um, pretty good.
Okay.
Pretty good. This last one is a little difficult, so I am taking my time. You know, consulting with uh Neil, consulting with the HR director because I just wanna make sure, you know.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate um the work you're doing and with your background and definitely an asset. So thank you for being here this evening.
And I'll, and I'll add to that, you know, the number of active grievances now for, you know, right down to one.
Okay.
Where it was a lot.
That's awesome.
Prior to. So we've done a lot in the last.
You know what that dropped from, um Mr. Hartman, by chance? Just if you had the number.
So I can't give you a number because it got so bad that what we did is we entered into a temporary agreement with AFSMI.
Okay.
For a standstill.
Okay.
That they would not lose their grievance rights if they brought them to the table.
Okay.
Um and so, you know, on one issue alone, I forget how many people were on one issue. It didn't turn into a formal grievance, but it got negotiated. Um and we, the last thing we did was I think we resolved four grievances in one agreement.
Awesome.
And then others were not brought because they were resolved before they got to the grievance stage.
But a substantial lowering.
But with the different, the differences night and day.
Okay.
It's, and the relationship has improved immensely. A lot of, a lot of what the focus has been on is where the biggest problems have been uh when we walked in the doors, we're walking in, you know, literally putting out fires. Uh to improve those things. Um and, you know, it was mentioned before as it relates to employees. Um we have employees that left in the first part of the year, but through making a lot of these improvements, they've started to come back.
Coming back.
Come. So that's been a real, a real sign of good things. But, you know, you, there's, nothing's ever perfect, so we're just constantly working on uh improving those things and helping what Joni's office is doing, what Neil's office is doing and everything else. And everything we can do that supplement the work being done in all the different bureaus around here. Uh Deb and I, we put a real focus on that. Uh but really improving the relationships uh and just how this place works internally has been such a huge focus and and taken up a lot of our time. But it's starting to pay dividends. I heard fire discuss last night, talking about. Working together, breaking down silos. I mean, we have planning codes, working with fire and police. Uh and and license and taxation on how we're dealing with after hour clubs. You know, prior to this, those groups were never working together and talking together. But now we're working together as the problems pop up and addressing them uh before they become an issue. Um so we've been really successful in 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 breaking those walls down. There's still a lot of work to do because there's a lot of, still a lot of silos here, but uh it's been fruitful and you could start to see dividends.
Absolutely. And um although it's a budget hearing, um there'd be nothing to allocate if there's no happy employees, honestly. So the culture and the environment is just important. So thank you for the work you guys are doing and I look forward to continuing working together and creating a better environment for the Harrisburg city.
Well, I'd like to add that um the department heads and staff, they've really been cooperative uh in helping us all get acclimated. Into the system and so I do appreciate that.
Awesome, awesome.
And I'll, and I'll also add, the mayor just brought up the point. Deb was part of the team that helped when we came in here in the first few months, answered thousands of pieces of mail.
Oh, yeah.
Uh and emails that were just hitting their stagnant from, from prior months and months and months. Uh of, of just communication that wasn't uh.
Catching up from the previous administration.
Yes. So, you know, there was a, there was a lot early on. Uh Deb really, really did a lot to help.
Documents that we from the city should have been filling out and we did not. We were late in some of the things that we should have done uh back in February. But we did not know that. There was boxes and boxes of mail, over two thousand on one email system alone.
Wow, it feels like we're caught up or getting caught up pretty much.
Getting caught up.
Well.
Response, the response time has been cut uh quite a bit.
Absolutely. Well, um I appreciate it. But I look forward to gaining it all back. We'll get it back. So thank you and I look forward to further collaboration. No further sentiments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh I'm gonna move on to Councilman Majors.
Thank you and and thank you all for being here. Um yes, budget is uh pretty straightforward. Uh in terms of the, you mentioned the lobbying piece. I know we still have to get something to come down before council. Uh I guess, when are you looking to begin the process of uh the RFP, uh just to then have those initial conversations?
It's a, it's a quarter one piece. It's, that's really gonna be up to Neil on his end, on where it fits in the puzzle to work.
If everyone behaves after the budget is passed, we will have this little quiet window through the projects that we have not been able to do. So, um but that's really what it is. It's one of those projects on top of everything else. So we had to draft information to start with, but we could not get the final trigger pulled on it.
I I would hope January, February, it's out on the street for firms, so proprietorships that we look at and putting their qualifications.
Okay. Thank you. Uh and then not budget related, but just more in terms of operations. And I know you talk about the breaking down of silos within city government. So you just talk a little bit about, um I guess. Your style and working with the mayor and and trying to work with all of the different uh department heads and and how that process is going.
Yeah, uh it's been interesting. You know, what we found was coming in here, there are a lot of great people and a lot of great managers. Um having an open dialogue, you know, we we will go into rooms uh with management. Uh have in the past felt like their voice wouldn't have been heard or they didn't have the ability to voice their opinion. Uh one of the things, you know, we focus on and I I do it with Marita's team, all the administration staff. Um is when we're not running in a million different directions, at least two times a month, we just sit down for about an hour. Uh we try to fix each other's problems. And everybody's open to come there and from Rebecca and Grants to Marita to Tim. Uh to Steve Portner to uh just go through the long list, Joni, Mike Hughes. I, we work because what happens is is there's so much experience here. And uh people felt bottled up or siloed. But when you realize somebody like Mike Hughes has worked in a lot of different areas down here, uh he's a virtual Swiss Army knife. Uh of, of, of different things that he can do here. But getting people, you know, to work together and feel comfortable to voice their opinions, you know, and their thoughts. Um it it's taken, taken time to get people, you know, acclimated to that sort of leadership style. But it's been very, very beneficial. You know, we hope to to continue doing that. Um. It it's a work in progress. I know I every day come here, I love every bit of what we do. I love every bit of seeing a smile uh on an individual, whether they're a customer who's come into codes. Somebody riding on an elevator, a coworker, how's your day going? Just focusing on those communications, those interpersonal relationships. We wanna make sure, and it's something I had said last year in the budget, is to make this the best place to possibly be working. Felt like it wasn't that way for a long time, how you saw people coming in and out. But the more we can continue building onto that, the more institutional knowledge that gets built, the better you are as it pertains to brain drain with retirements and and people leaving out. And going separate ways, cross-training, uh you know, is another thing Joni can speak to, cross-training. Um we believe a lot in cross-training. Marita's staff has been doing a lot with that. I would love, and IT will be coming uh later, um they're, they're short-staffed. We went in their budget and we went. What was out there in the private sector and the other public sector and what it would take to get a full complement, getting them trained in the cross-training. Because we don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring. But if we can make sure we have the best trained staff, uh that's willing to address not only our internal concerns, but the public's concerns. You know, we're gonna be a lot better off.
Thank you. And then, you know, extra role as a BA and 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 chief of staff, uh just in terms of. And out of you are the mayor, but in terms of, you know, I guess continuing to uh. Getting uh bringing, you know, new workforce and 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 folks into the city. Uh are we still looking at uh continuing a a hybrid approach to work or what's the, the work that we're looking to do in terms of. We're bringing people into, come to work for the city since we know, you know, in in this environment now. Uh to attract employees uh to city government or to, you know, government in general. They've been providing people with a lot of different incentives. So just trying to get thought process of the administration on, on how, you know, they're looking to tackle that. Because as we all know, there's a lot of vacancies within city government. You've also mentioned um, you know, the retirements, just to, you know, we know we have. Um a lot of folks that are either at or near. Um, a lot of folks that are either at or near uh retirement age in the city, so just trying to figure out, you know, what we're doing to. Sure, we're gonna have a a quality workforce for the city.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, just looking at and I'll I'll touch the telework and remote work. Uh, mayor early on wanted to bring for cultural purposes, bring people back in there, but I'm going to say within that. There are staff members that, you know, from their children getting sick to them being sick that. You know, they may have came and contacted somebody with COVID, hey, can I work remote? The mayor. Super flexible, uh, we do a very good job uh granting uh those sort of arrangements. Um, that means Alfred, he's a prime example for that. Um, one of his his children got sick this week. He's been working from home, but because of how we're communicating through email, through uh online communications, uh. Skype teams, go through the long list of those and on the phone, a beat's not being missed, you know, there are obviously jobs, police, fire, go through them. They have to be there, codes, they have to be, you know, by physically in the building and then out in the public. Um, but a level of flexibility has been successful, but primarily focused on creating people. Uh, inside here because the number of vacancies that we've had in the last year, um, it's really difficult to have that new employee. Who may be early career, mid-career, late career, just come in and walk in here and be able to understand system, culture and everything. So I know for those positions, people uh brought back in, that's a great benefit. It's a great benefit for them to learn what we're doing here. Um, you know, we're gonna be open to to change with times, obviously. Looking at what's going on nationally, there are places that are continuing telework, there are places that had telework but are looking at feeling some of the back. Uh, it's just being as agile as we can as a player in a workplace, that's gonna be key. Mayor and my and my style, you know, I, we get to typically, we, you know, we talk it out and we get to something that makes sense. And and really, I think that's what's gonna be key moving forward is something that makes sense for our residents, something that makes sense for our employees and. Potential employees, uh, but always continuing to work together to figure out what that, what that is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. I just had a question regarding the appropriation for line forty-two nine. Zero one five, the travel and then four-two-nine-zero-one-six, the conferences. That you mentioned the business administrators group, is it like a formalized group or is it really informal, just. Kind of supportive of one another, what?
It's supportive, what's interesting is is it started as a group that met prior, just prior to the pandemic in person. Like, it started out of Lancaster originally, gentleman who ran it out of there, hired, uh, but it spread from there. Eastons involved, Allentown's involved, it's third-class cities and a lot of it is, is hey, we're about to go through. This sort of R F P, what were your experiences? What were your lessons learned getting through, you know, a lot of that? So part support group, but but really the learning and valuable experience. Of networking, working with. Very West, for example, this rant. Learn, you learn a lot from that. Um, so that's, that's something that they're now bringing back. It was canceled last week because the scheduling was like, oh, it's a day before Thanksgiving, so the uh the auto scheduling didn't work out for for that. But it's a, it's a monthly occurrence that we're gonna be looking at doing uh hosting. Uh, and I would love, you know, at some point in the next year to be able to bring folks down here. Department heads and talk about what they're going through. And then our department heads to be able to to ask them because every city's set up a little bit different. Responsible for what? I, just getting that perspective was awesome.
I'm sure, so there's no formalized membership required for this, it's just sort of.
News, no nothing.
Okay.
Literally started out of a small group of individuals saying, hey, let's help one another. It turned into pandemic, creating havoc and needing to have a virtual, virtual option for it. It stayed that way over the last almost. Almost three years, uh, but now that everybody's getting out of the shell and going back uh, back into the field. Um, you know, seeing those friendly faces and getting to see things, you know, hands-on. You know, we're looking forward to that sort of.
Oh, that's good, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, so I didn't see any membership.
Yeah.
Uh, associated with that line items.
It's nice to have an association that doesn't uh charge you membership and then when you hit that fifty thousand plus, the rate goes up, so. That's a, that's a nice benefit we have, but it's a.
And just thank you, Ms. Robinson, for being so candid, um, I appreciate that. Don't you want to move to H R? No, I mean, in some capacity in the bureau, but the mayor's looking at me like, absolutely not, so, okay. I don't have.
You do not know the form of work that we had since January.
Oh, no, I just know, she's sure of it, but I just know that her background in H R could be helpful, that's all.
And some of it's confidential, we have to be very, very careful how we exterminate.
Absolutely.
And having Deb being able to be there and inside here, but partial because she's not up there, that's been really beneficial. Because through her background and 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 decades of experience doing it in New York City, um, she has a different lens. And it's, it's so valuable. Um, you know, I think the mayor jokingly will say sometimes that she needs to get changed. From running around the building, trying to help the situation or or work on something and and.
I can imagine.
On her budget side, Gina too, but uh, you know, we're.
Absolutely, that's the important part. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Matsum.
A large number of my questions are all of them essentially been asked, um, it's pretty straightforward. I will commend um your office. Because when you have that amount of grievances, typically that's a sign of either an unsafe workplace. Or it's a tit for tat because the members want to hit back at management because they feel like they're being petty about discipline. And I know this because when I was at revenue and I was a labor rep. Management was punishing people for being a minute late and stuff like that, so then I started hitting them. Grievances went up and. And morale goes down and then you get resignations and then it just becomes a bad environment, so.
Turn that around that quickly.
And and I'll add, it would not be possible, you know, I I'm coming here saying that as statistic, but. You know, I I can look at Neil here, I can look at Joni, uh, Vince Bullware, you know, I can look at Dave Baker, Dave West. Uh, Commissioner Carter, Chief Enterline, um, they're really the ones responsible for for getting this going, you know, I I. I kind of oversee, help make decisions on things, but if we weren't all there as a team together. Uh, working on improving those things, I mean Sasha Ross today, uh, we had such a smooth labor management meeting. Um, these were hours and hours and hours long for years, these meetings, they're thirty minutes to forty-five minutes now. And keeping that open flow of information going with them and not trying to slide things in. Um, and just keeping them involved, respecting their role in the process, that sort of thing has has helped driven us to the point where we can get through it in a half an hour. And not have things to issue, but I, you know, I I have to come and sit here and then and thank a lot of other people for for us getting to that point.
Very good, next one, Jim.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rose.
Good evening again to everybody. Um, I don't have any questions, all of my questions have been answered adequately. Um, just more of applause and commitments, I think that um. No city's perfect, I think we've gotten much better. Uh, morale is definitely up, I know even when I come in the building, I feel different. Um, I feel different with living in this city and it's all because you all have worked as a team. And worked with us as city council, um, so just, just thank you and continue the great job and I just look forward to seeing. All the great things that Harrisburg and Hester offer because we're, we're small but mighty, so, thank you.
We're, we're always here, whatever you need, uh, we're always here to work with you. On any constituent concerns, problems, anything you think that can make this city better. Twenty-four hours a day, we're here, email, phone. I never turn, turn any of it off from the police radio to the uh, the cell phone and email, so I'm always here.
He loves that police radio.
Yeah.
But we, you know, just went and back and, you know, we're back up for Dan. Um, a lot of the complaints we get, we do not refer to city council. They may ask for you on the phone and what we do is we take them ourselves. As I stated before, we had over two hundred and twenty-five. Different complaints and we met with those individuals, so we want to do that, we want to be an asset to you as well as you for us. But we know you all have full-time jobs and so that if we can, you know, accommodate that at resident or that constituent, we certainly will.
Yeah, and I mean, just speaking on that, that goes from going out to, hey, my street light at this intersection's out. Going out at night, somebody tied to the mayor's staff and actually writing the number down on that pole so we can work with Percy and his staff. To get a light replaced, Dave Baker saying, well, the delays are 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 too high, you know, taking. Three months to get the 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 bulbs, but we can replace with this. You know, all of us just working together to strategize how to best best respond to that. One, it gets things done in a quicker fashion for them. Two, it's a lot easier because then they're not coming to you with nasty gram emails saying that everything's fallen on deaf ear, you know, we try to. Limit that as much as possible, not just like the mayor said, because everybody has a full-time job. I mean, we don't want you having to spend your evening responding to constituent complaints that should be addressed, you know, on the front end by us a lot earlier.
Well, thank you, um, because it it's teamwork and I and I see that, so we we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions or comments?
Your job as business administrator is to make sure that the city's functioning, that state's work done. You know, that you're consulting with lobbyists, making sure that we're limiting our liabilities and. Our opportunities for um assets. Um, so the general comment they have is, is just, you know, hearing these conversations about there not being evaluations. Like as council, we've worked really hard over the years to make sure that all employees were evaluated, uh, every, pretty much every budget cycle we've been. Full, um, that those evaluations happen and that was one of our tools to make sure that we as an entity are. Living by our own values of equity, that our, you know, women are being paid comparable to their male counterparts, we go color being paid. Properly to their, um, like counterparts, et cetera, et cetera, and I feel like removing, having removed that for this cycle, um. It, having one of those is really pulling us a little bit backwards because I thought we were progressing towards.
We are progressive.
Our staff, you know, was evaluated and compensated according to what they're contributing.
And we have to look at it from from two levels, there's the union side of it where that's obviously, that's handled completely different by a contract. But on the management side, uh, it's something that hasn't regularly actually been done for for quite, it's something that needs a revamp.
Um. Has it not, so every year that we think so, including last year, the last, but they were happening, they really were happening, moving up.
They happened, but not in full, like every, they're not being done by everybody.
Well, that, I mean, I specifically remember that question happening, at least last year, um, like Joni said, that every. Evaluated.
It's, there are evaluations done, but a lot of it. Depend on on different work areas, uh, some areas, they're done at a hundred percent for management, where they're all getting it. Um, that's not happening, but really figuring out what that process is to improve it and that's something the mayor. Uh, mayor, obviously she said she was gonna go to the border on it. Um, we'll take the mayor's lead on that and put that out in the coming uh, coming week, perhaps just put a. New and better process.
That's something you need to make sure that it happens because, you know, it's a tool for professional development. It's a tool of making sure that we're paying people equitably, it's also a protection against losses. When we are able to say we paid someone fairly because we know it and, you know, let's say we filed a discrimination claim. We can back up that, hey, we did, we didn't pay them fairly or we did whatever. So, so just make sure it's safe to come this year, get back on track and making sure that we are doing all that we can. In our capacity to make sure that we're being equitable, but also protecting ourselves.
I agree with you, but I also believe that since it's been um a long time, things have changed. Uh, job descriptions have changed, management has changed. I really think that managers, supervisor and above, whoever's responsible for doing the evaluation. They should be trained at a certain level so that they can do the evaluation correctly because. Everything is not disciplinary, some things are just administrative. And if you don't tell the person that they're not doing something correctly, how would they really know? So, you know, so first, before we do anything, I think we need to get the managers properly trained to perform. The evaluation in all fairness to uh, to the employees.
That we could, you know, try to avoid slipping back.
We're not slipping backwards and as a matter of fact, that's one of the thing that I've been doing is make sure all the directors are on the same pay level. There's some that's been here for five and six years, has not gotten an increase at all, not even a two percent. So that's another thing that I'm looking at to make sure all of my directors are on the same level of pay.
You'll see as you go through the budget, you know, deputies all being paid in that seventy thousand range, you'll see the mayor has gone through. Uh, methodically and and looked at making pays the same, you know, I'll make mention, uh, deputy treasurer, deputy controller. There was a wide, a wide gap between them, she did do, um, did do work, uh, this fall going through to try to address some of those issues. Um, because you couldn't make sense of, well, you're a deputy here overseeing this many people, deputy over here since. Not much experience, if difference in 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 years' experience, why is there a gap? So you'll see that as you go through some of the, some of the other agencies as you go through. That was a focus you had this fall.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the business administrators office? Thank you, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, I guess we're ready to move on to the next department, which is the Office of the City Solicitor. Look, he brought it to the whole office, Willie.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a crack staff, I'm just telling you, so.
Once again, if you could just go over, like overview your office, what they do. Um, and then, um, any updates you want to give us on your office and then any questions that we have asked beforehand, if you could just read over those. And then we'll go down the line with any other questions.
Uh, as you know, the Office of City Solicitor basically manages the legal affairs of the city on very, very many fronts. Um, whether it's legislative, contractual, litigation, uh, H R related claims. Uh, we we provide guidance and training to departments for issues that arise. Um, we are a small town with big city problems, we have been, that that's just the way we are. And so we 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 tend to be involved, if you see a social issue out there that's being fought about. Someone's bringing that same issue as a legal matter to the city of Harrisburg, so we we deal with all of that, we we try to bring compliance in a way that works for departments. Um, and we try to communicate consistently with the courts at all levels on what the city's position is on on all, all kinds of things. Um, the uh, this year's been challenging for different reasons. Um, but you know, we are technically, what I have right now is myself a part-time, remote senior deputy. Uh, and uh, two support staff, um, which I'm very fortunate to have. Um, we are the right to know office for the city of Harrisburg. Um, we have moved into astronomical numbers for right to knows from prior years. As of today, it was four hundred and ninety-one requests uh that we had as of year to date and that's actually slowing down from what it was in the summer. There was one month where we had a hundred requests in thirty days, um, and we still have the same time clocks to respond to them. Uh, as you know, we do not have a digitized record system in the city, so the responses are very, very challenging. Um, we also deal with all the subpoenas in the city for all kinds of matters, as I've mentioned, we're dealing with one. That's twenty-two years worth of records that, um, we are, we are having to hire. having to hire all kinds of outside contractors to handle that review of city records to respond to the case. We are in negotiations with the ACLU over the city's permitting system, which is moving towards a close, I hope, as we're going on right now. We participate in all the labor negotiations and we provide guidance to elected officials. The this has been a challenging year for hiring people. We have, I said, we think we've sent our twelfth person in a row to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as a lawyer. They've come to our office. We give them a lot very quickly and then they move on. And we are very fortunate to have Tiffany Baldock come back, who was our senior deputy. She was here four and a half years. I will literally just hear from her again as sitting at this table because I'm trying to persuade her to move to from part-time to full-time for next year. And that negotiation is going on right now. Whether she would come back, but I don't think she has any interest in coming back to Pennsylvania. She's, she's, she's living in the South now. And she's doing work remotely. Now she's doing about six hours a day is what she's been able to do. The, I can go through the questions that you asked me and feel free to interrupt me at will. First question that I got was, when do you intend to fill the two senior deputy vacancies? Which quarter of 2023? External candidates? It's always external candidates. If you know any lawyers working for the city and they're hiding that from me, I want to know. The one of the senior deputy position and the assistant city solicitor position are partially funded for 2023. They both have start dates for March or April first. The other senior deputy position will be deemed filled by Tiffany Baldock, who was returned working part-time remotely and we're working towards having her come back full-time early in 2023. The other spot will be filled in April if we have a suitably experienced candidate. Second question we got was, when do you intend to fill the assistant city solicitor position? Again, in April, if we have a suitable candidate. That's when the position funding starts as, you know, as part of the balanced budget process. The, I will note that we have asked for significantly increases in attorney salaries because we have had a very hard time filling positions this year. I frankly don't know if that will solve the problem. With the younger attorneys, we are just having an experience on quality of life questions. And it is the night meetings that we go to, not just for this body, but for all the others. It's a, there is a very limited interest for people trying to put in, you know, eight nights a month sometimes working, you know, on top of the daytime work. And we have not solved that problem. I will note that I have talked to three former employees of mine. One who is seriously considering accepting coming back. Another who is willing to consider it. And the third, I will probably just cause them to get fired so they come back. That's, I've started soliciting attorneys one at a time to come in. Oddly, today was the first time in four months, I got two resumes the same day. I don't know, just, just, just by happenstance. You know, we had one interview recently of someone who is very interested. But we can't quite place that yet. He would, he would get a second interview and then we'd have to figure out where that goes. The position that'd be open to that person if they want it, I don't know if they do, is the collections position, which is not in the budget for the solicitor, but is in the budget for public works. When do you intend to fill the lean specialist vacancy? In the first quarter, if we can. There, there's also a collections attorney, as I mentioned. Those two positions go hand in glove. The collection attorney would supervise the lean specialist. I don't know, it's yet because of the changeover in the the computer system. It's going to be a significant assist with that process. You know, we are looking with IT questions about how to transition some of that data for these liens. They would like to, like technically remove a series of very old ones from the system so they don't have to transition them. And we're in those discussions on the proper way to do that. Liens are legally complicated for a municipality. You actually have a limit to what the can be forgiven or written off. Statutory at the power belongs to the council. And for example, leaning the courthouse can be reduced by fifty percent after ten years. You know, for ten years in the courthouse. So it's very limited in what the forgiveness is, and forgiveness is a legislative function. So it would have to come back to council. So we're looking at that, but we clearly have bad, bad, impossible to collect debt on the books. You know, if the house is sold three times and the lien wasn't in the courthouse under the right name, it's very hard to get a new one or have a responsibility for undisclosed debt that was not filed. So, you know, we have a series of civil cases that were filed in the eighties and nineties. They're uncollectible as a matter of law, but they're still on the books and still on the system. When do we intend to fill the catalog or position part-time as early as possible? That, if you recall, position is related to the inventory of the Civil War Museum. We have a contract with them that they're supposed to raise a certain amount of money within a time period. And if not, the city has the right to sell part of that inventory because we've never had friend for that. COVID has screwed that timetable up completely because it's not fair if the museum's not open to count the period against them. So I don't think we know exactly what the deadline is today. That's a discussion the mayor will be having and I think has had to some degree with the Civil War Museum representatives, but I don't know that we have a final answer on what the agreed timetable is now. We have never inventoried the museum since we provided the objects and we own most of the objects since the museum opened in, was it nineteen ninety-something, nineteen ninety-nine or whatever the year was. And we, it's thousands and thousands and thousands of items, so. When do we intend to fill the legal assistance vacancy? We would take internal candidates and external candidates because it's not a union job. We're not required to post it internally. But frankly, we'll interview anyone who is, has the right skills. The, but it's early in 2023. I would hope that the person would be on board in January, February. One of the challenges we have is that the right-to-know officer is also the paralegal. And responding to both right-to-knows and all the litigation document support is very, very challenging with one person doing it. And so this person would support those same two items. They wouldn't be the right-to-know officer, but they'd be the backup to that person as they're doing it. So we intend to fill that as early as possible. As I noted, we are four hundred and ninety-one right-to-knows as of today. So the volume just keeps, keeps going up. The highest we'd ever been is about, I think, three oh seven we were at last year. And we were at two something the year before. And it's just probably going to stay on that arc. People are very used to just hitting the computer and sending in a request. And some of the requests are dauntingly large, so. When do we intend to fill the two law clerk positions part-time? These positions are purposely unfunded. If the city continues to have difficulty filling the attorney positions, we will be asking to reallocate attorney salaries to one or both law clerk positions. The law clerks would be law students working part-time on a temporary basis. But they're there so that there's at least a position to put funding into if we're unsuccessful in keeping counsel. What is the diversity complement for the office? We have one male, three females, one is a black female, two are white females, and I guess one of us is a senior citizen, so. There are no current employees, there are current employees who are bilingual. We have none. Although Tiffany did say that if asked, she would tell you she speaks K-9. It's her other language, so. Any other questions? Happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open it up to my colleague, starting to my far right, with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Grover. Thank you for coming every evening. I know you have to.
Yes.
You're here.
You can remove that rule from your rules. Your rule says you can't have a meeting without a solicitor.
Yes, so you're here. You may have answered it. But I was just wondering, I saw there's two senior deputy city solicitors. The pay for one of them decreased. And I was just wondering why, but you may have answered it partially.
That's because it's not starting till March one.
That's what I thought. So it's just a partial for the rest.
Right.
That was all my.
Yeah, that's identical salary otherwise.
You know, I was just wondering why someone's paying way down. Trouble, but that's fine. I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madsen?
I don't know if he's done some cross-analysis, but compared to other municipalities, how is our pay scale with our solicitors?
I haven't done that cross-analysis. I did pull every attorney's salary for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And we're sort of in the marketplace with them now. So it's not just salary. That's the reality. But they are, depending that they're really, I was shocked how varied they are agency to agency. But, you know, but we go nowhere near the top level of people with experience, but we never had people here that long like the state does to get that experience. There's been one solicitor ever who vested a pension in the city out of our office. So it is a, it's a burnout kind of job. It just is. And it's kind of like a young DA's office where they hire young folks, give them lots of experience, but most of them ADAs move on to something else within the first couple of years. We know as a solicitor's office, it's kind of the same way. You know, we give you lots and lots of experience and responsibility immediately and as much support as we can. But, but, you know, we have, some of them make a hundred and sixty thousand at the state, depending what it is. Some are making eighty-two thousand at the state.
Yeah. You do some recent activities. I've run into a lot of former solicitors from Harrisburg. Are we typically losing them from to the state? Is that what you've seen or are we losing?
I've sent twelve assistant solicitors to the state.
Wow, out of?
Out of fourteen. I've had fourteen employees since I've been here. And twelve of them went to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And then none of them work at night, so.
Noticing a theme there.
Yes, there's a theme there.
Okay. Great. All right, I guess we'll have to think about what to do. All right, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. I'm hopeful that the two resumes that you received and the possible return of a former employee will be helpful for the office in the new year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Majors?
Thank you. Just, just one question, just to the increase in the professional services on this year. The proposed budget has it to three hundred and nine thousand versus what was it about the last year? So just wanted to, if you could speak to that increase. Now, we have a lot of.
I'm just trying to pull it up here in front of me here, so. So, so, so part of that is we have we're ticking back up in litigation. Our rates that people have charged have gone up some substantially. You know, I've had to fight very hard to keep us within what I consider a government rate, but it's harder to get a firm to come in who's not our full-time outside firm. We have, we have, we have been pulled into some very complicated litigation. Some of them going back twenty-some years of records. We have three of them going on right now. And it just requires more, more assistance, more, more copying, more records, more people that aren't just lawyers working on it, so. I, what we allocated originally in the beginning of this year, 2022, as you know, we came back for an extra hundred thousand dollars, which was, was the council approved because of part of that problem. And until we have people on board, we have, we have conflict councilor essentially handling hearings that normally would be done in-house. It's a very expensive way to go.
Right, okay. And yep, that's it. And just echo President Bauer's sentiments about hopefully we're able to bring some of those people on board. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Gray.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels? Any questions or comments? Councilman Rodriguez?
No questions, just more of sentiments to echo sentiments of Madam President and Councilman Majors. Just look forward to Solicitor's Office getting a full complement to need so we can really get things done. I've been to Solicitor Grover's office and seen the mountains, so I understand. No further, no further comments.
Any other questions or comments for the Solicitor's Office? I'd just like to say thank you to Solicitor Grover for all of your hard work for keeping us going, making sure we have legislation to come down. Your office plays a very vital role in keeping city government moving forward. And a lot of it falls on your shoulder, so thank you. Hopefully you are able to get some of those positions filled so that you can go home sometimes instead of being here all the time.
I will note, I bought my first piece of furniture when Stephen left. They added a couch to my office. So just so.
A much-needed sofa, right?
Yes, so. But thank you very much and you know, it's my hope and my wife's hope that I can have some time off sometime early next year.
Yes. Thank you. We will move on to the Bureau of Human Resources. All right, we are going to take a five-minute recess in between just to allow everyone to stretch their legs, use the restroom, grab some candy. That will bring us back at seven twenty-six. Alright, if everyone could, uh, get back to their seats, we're at seven twenty-nine. Thank you, everyone. Uh, we will resume where we left off, which is to start with the Bureau of Human Resources. Thank you, Director Joni, for being here. Uh, if you would. Give us an overview of your office and what you do, some of your goals and plans for your office. Uh, and then any questions that you received previously, if you could just go over those and then we'll open it up for questions from the colleagues.
Okay, so right now we have two employees that have been there about eight months. So we're really trying to bring them up to speed. Which is, which is a lot, you know. Considering everything we do, um. That right now is our main goal, is getting. Them up to speed and getting it to other new people on board. We do have two candidates already in the background process. Um, we're hoping to hire our confidential secretary. Within the next couple of weeks and the other HR specialist would be at the end of January. So, uh, another thing we need to do is we really need to. Work on updating policies because some of our policies are very outdated, but it's very difficult. Because we don't have the EO officer to assist. And also because my time is spent. Between HR responsibilities and also. Insurance or risk management. So I do the dual role and a half for years. So that's where we're about at.
Alright, I don't know if we had any questions that were sent to you beforehand?
Yes. If we could go over those questions and answers, sure. When do you intend to fill the human resource specialist vacancy? Which quarter in twenty twenty-three? Um, we expect to fill it in the first quarter, sometime at the end of January. When do you intend to fill the confidential sec- secretary vacancy? That should be filled. Within the next two weeks. Do you intend to fill the new risk management analyst role? If so, which quarter of twenty twenty-three? Internal or external? It would be open to both internal and external candidates. Uh, this, it's a new position. And it would be beneficial to bring that person on board as soon as the city is budgetarily able. The, um, I have been managing these duties along with human resources responsibility for many years. This can be a revenue-producing position. Um, if there's a dedicated person in this role full-time, recently, one of the claims I settled for, um. On behalf of the city was for forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. There was another one earlier this year that was for thirty-three thousand dollars. It does take a lot of time and energy to contact insurance carriers and keep working back and forth. I work with the law bureau on them, you know, to see what we can, we can come to a mutual agreement to get the city reimbursed for a lot of damages that have been done. To vehicles, to streetlights. You know. Buildings, you know, it's, it's very time-consuming. Our bureaus complement, currently there are five employees, two black females, one white female, one Hispanic female and one black male. And we have one bilingual person.
Thank you very much. Um, it definitely seems like you're, you're filling your role as well as another full-time role. So hopefully we can, um, get, get someone on-boarded into that position quickly. Uh, I'm gonna open up to my colleagues for questions. I'm gonna start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Um, thank you, Chair Green. I have no direct questions at this moment, but I may, um, come back around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Thank you, um. Excuse me, uh. Questions that I have are gonna be, I guess, if we. May not be information to be able to provide today, but if we can get that, I think would be. Extremely helpful, um, for us. Uh, like the overall complement of the city, the number of employees, uh, that the city. Has in total. The diversity complement of all the cities we're getting, I mean, Pete, you know, we're getting them by department if we can have what that overall. Number is, and then. Lastly, one question I asked of the police yesterday, but if we could get this. For the city as well is the number of folks that live in the city versus don't live in the city.
I was working on that before I came down and. I had to stop.
Okay. And then you did mention about having to fill dual roles on the, on the EO, so. I, I, I would assume you think that us having someone on. Staff and to do deal with affirmative action would be something that would be beneficial to the city?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Um, I did submit some of the questions that you've already responded to. Um, but if you could please share a job description for the risk management analyst, since that's a new role. Um, I would appreciate that. I do have a few other follow-up questions. Um, so, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but we've been doing quarterly reporting. Basically with the major departments. Um, and. It's sort of like clockwork from each department. They know vacancies and salaries are their big challenges that they've experienced. Over the course of this year. I'm just wondering, um, what role HR has in. Um, either. Recruitment, is there a recruitment strategy or retention strategy in place? Um, to assist with some of the. The output of these departments.
HR does participate in advertisement, um. Depending on the job, it will depend on where we place an ad. Uh, recruitment is a challenge from every position. Even from the laborer to on up. Salaries are always a big issue. Um, turnover seems to be. A big issue with, um, the younger people. They come in, get their experience, they last a year. Maybe six months, some of them, and then you move on. So, um, we have a big turnover out in the public works as far as like for drivers, motor equipment operators. Which is nationwide with CDL operators, CDL, um. Rules and regulations have changed on how you can obtain one. We used to do a lot of in-house training. We can no longer do that. They must be trained by a certified. Instructor. So that kind of put a limit on our, the guys that we offered this opportunity to, to learn while working. So we had to stop.
Okay. Uh, following up, I guess with the retention piece. Mentioned recruitment is a challenge. We know salaries are an issue. Uh, retention. How does HR, if you do it all? Um, engage with current employees? Is there any level of employee engagement? Outside of, I guess, the hiring process where there are.
Once the hiring process is, is complete. Most of the employees do not come to see me unless there's a problem or someone in HR. Whether it be health insurance or payroll issues. Uh, disciplinary issues, but, um, as far as, um. Retaining them. Now, as, we don't have anything special that we have in place.
Okay. And the last, um, item for discussion is the performance evaluations. I guess just to get some clarity and so that everyone either listening or watching can hear. Um, some of the responses that you shared when you were sitting in the back. I guess my question is, um. As Councilwoman Daniels noted earlier, we were where. Last year, um, evaluations were in place. Um, what has happened since then?
So we did do performance evaluations last year, and I don't know if it's because the administration was changing or. Um. What we, what the issue was, we try, I trained people on how to do the performance evaluation. Some directors showed up, some didn't. Uh. You would get some honest evaluations. There were, if there was a friction between the director and employee, the evaluation didn't seem fair. Uh. Some just automatically gave their employee a hundred percent. No. Description on, you know. What they were actually doing, it's just they went through and checked all the boxes and just said, okay, they're excellent employee. So, um. After that, this year, we were going to look at the evaluation process and try to. Re-evaluate it. And come up with something different. Unfortunately, you know, time got the best of us and we didn't get to it.
I know that there are some performance evaluation tools out there. I'm thinking of NeoGov specifically. I don't know, um, the cost. But with NeoGov, you can, as I mentioned earlier, the employee can. Self-evaluate. And then their manager or supervisor, whomever conducts their own evaluation. They come together. The employee in the self-evaluation is allowed to have an opportunity to outline their goals. Um, it's like a numeric. Um, metric system, grading system for both the employee and the manager. Um, the employee can write out their goals for the, the year. Um, and take an opportunity to discuss it with their manager. The employee shares their self-evaluation, the manager shares their evaluation, the employee is required to sign both. Um. As a review, and then they together review both their short-term and long-term goals.
So we did something similar to that last year where the director met with the employee. Prior to doing the evaluation. And then they would complete it. It then went to the reviewing officer and the reviewing officer would meet with the employee. They would discuss it and then it would be finalized. So it was something similar to that.
Okay. Um, well, I, I certainly still would advocate for them. I think we've all talked about, uh, very clearly. The positive aspects of having them on employees' files. So I would hope that we can explore some of those options. I don't know, maybe there's something available. With Tyler Technologies that could assist as we migrate, uh, from the mainframe, but I think. Um, exploration of those software options or other evaluation tools will be helpful. In the new year.
Yeah, there is an HR component. For the, um, performance evaluation within Tyler, so.
Oh, good, okay.
So, we're, we, I can't wait till we move to Tyler because right now we're still paper on everything.
I know.
And it's, it's just, we just have boxes everywhere. All our file cabinets are full. We still have, um, files on employees who retired back in the seventies that we have to still maintain, so. It's, it's really difficult.
I know, well, we're right there with you. We're ready for the migration to, to be complete, but I'm glad to hear that they do have an evaluation. Component within the software, so that's good to know and something built in that will be compatible for everybody. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mattson.
Though my big question was the turnover piece, but I think we went over that. Outside of the things you mentioned, was there any other items that, uh. Maybe reasons for people leaving?
Seems to, our biggest challenge has, um. Not so much anymore, but we did have some issues with public works where people would come work one or two days and I'd get a phone call, say. They didn't show up. We had one guy actually get on the bus. From the job site and just leave. Um, yeah, there were some multiple issues. It, it seems to be improving. Morale seems to be a lot better. But you have, um, some of the younger people. Just feel some of that work is beneath them.
Okay.
So they stay for short periods and next thing you know, they're gone. Or they don't believe that, um. The standard work rules and the contract apply to them. They still, they should, um. Make up their own. Uh, we had a person. That was her. Employee for thirty days. He worked maybe two weeks out the entire thirty and then shows up the one day, um, with his street clothes on. Three hours late for work. And felt that was okay.
Don't know how you fix that. Uh, that is. Well, yeah.
But, um, yes, I, I don't know how to fix it or to get across. We have some employees that are very young and they're great. And I expect to see them here for years. But there's just some that. That type of work is just not for them.
Right, no, I understand. That was. Something I've seen that kind of can help with that is offering a kind of path forward. That kind of can help with that is offering a kind of path forward to a career pathway or something like that, to say, hey, I mean, this is where you are now, but. In a year or two or three years, if you work hard, you can get to a place where you're doing next job.
Working with um, Ask Me, we've been changing job descriptions to allow people to come on entry level. And obtain different certifications and then automatically move to the, the next step. Instead of having that three-year line of progression. So we've been looking at the more difficult positions right now. And like the automotive mechanic, one, we, we've having a lot of problems hiring auto mechanics. We have actually, and we only have one right now, but they think there's like four or five in the budget. So we did some changes with Ask Me today that were approved to try to bring people in. You know, at the beginning and let them work towards being promoted within.
Uh, so before you mentioned that, due to some regulations, we couldn't, for example, do in-house CDL training. Are there other skill sets uh, similar to that, like for example, the mechanic piece you just mentioned? Is that something we're able to trade and train in-house, or is that also?
No, they would probably, they would have to go to a te- technical school.
Okay.
So they would have to obtain their certifications, like admissions and state inspections on their own, however. We bring them in and let them start here at the basics, and then, you know, they can go test. And with the knowledge that if they pass the test and receive their certifications, they're going to automatically move to an auto mechanic too. So we've been trying creative ways, and the union has been very good. In cooperating with us and improving these things, they understand that, you know, we're trying to fill up positions. But skill positions are very difficult to fill right now, and the salaries are. We're just not competitive, competitive with some of the salaries from the private sector.
Okay, are we competitive when it comes to surrounding municipalities or the government?
I haven't really looked at that, with some of them we are, but um, the private sectors. Just like giant for a CDL driver, they have big signs up, they're paying thirty dollars an hour, we cannot compete with that. It's just not possible.
Yep. Well, thank you, and that's all my questions for now, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, good evening, Mrs. Wilmington, thank you for coming. I had two questions, uh, my first one was, I know that uh, finding employees is hard. I know that's still, is still a big issue pre-COVID, or post-COVID, I should say. So I was. Wondering, we may already do this practice, but if not, I was wondering if it's possible if we could, but say um. Someone applies for a sanitation position, and they don't get the job. But on their application, you notice, hey, they, or can be an automotive mechanic. Do we then maybe say to them, hey, you didn't get this position, but we do have an opening here, and I see on your resume, you do have these skills. Would you like to apply for this position? Is that a practice we already do, or can we use?
I already do that.
Okay.
I give people phone calls all the time and say, you know, you might be better fit for this, this is a higher-paying position, you know, would you come in and interview for that? And a lot of times they do.
Oh, I was gonna ask that, what is that percentage rate for that?
I had good results from that.
I love your forward thinking, thank you, that's wonderful. Um, my other question was. Just, I know we're working on the evaluate, evaluation process. But another one, like a, a feedback piece, and we may already do this already, but I was wondering with our current employees. Uh, are we already doing maybe like a thirty-day, sixty-day, or ninety-day um, feedback using maybe. Survey Monkey or Google Forms, just to get everyone's feedback and try to be proactive of putting things in place. Before they uh, go south or.
No, there's nothing, the only thing we have right now is, is when they leave an exit interview packet.
Is there any way we could, not to put more work on it, but I know that is, but I think it. Might be a start of trying to get some feedback and being able to collect that data, drill it down and say, okay, hey, I see this is an overwhelming. Response to this answer, here's some things that we can do, um, if that's possible.
It may be something we can tie in with um, with bargaining unit, they get three evaluations because they have a nine-month probationary period. So it may be something we can tie in when they get their um, three months, six and nine.
Okay.
So that's something we can come up with and create, and then have them fill it out. On how's the job going, how do you feel, and is there some things we can approve, so.
Yeah, that would be.
Maybe something we can look in with that, I'd have to discuss it with the union.
Okay.
They are, majority of those are bargaining unit.
Correct.
Uh, managers have a six-month probationary period. So it may be something we can tie in with that, with them also.
Okay, and the directors too, like city director, yourself, all of you, I would want you to participate in it too, because. You know, your voice is just as important, um, you know, just to get everybody's thoughts, and like I said, be proactive about it, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's something we can look at, the difficult part with it is when you're dealing with parks and recreation, ma- maintenance people. In public works, they don't have emails. So it's paper, and you give it to them, say, can you please fill this out?
That doesn't always happen.
No, we have, we struggle enough getting them to update their addresses, emergency contacts, you know, review their leave history. And we're like pulling teeth to get those back.
With the Tyler communications, I'm sorry if I'm saying the name wrong. Will they be able to get emails then? I just feel like every city employee should have an email.
There is um, something within Tyler where employees would have access to go on and fill out forms on their own. Not come to us in the office.
Okay.
We, maybe even tie something in there with that, as far as, you know, make sure you fill out this form, and they can do it from home or their phone. But we're not at that.
We're gonna get there though, but yes, but um, but thank you, and I look forward to, you know, seeing the evaluations um, too with the. Just to see how, what people were thinking, like I said, for pro being. Thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
I have two follow-up questions. Um, one is regarding training. Do any of the current employees or any of the vacant positions in your office? Do any of these individuals have any training background or the ability to lead training for employees? Should they request it or have an interest in it?
At this time, no.
Okay.
What I've done, put in the budget for next year was for um, all of the employees that are currently there. To um, take the SHRM classes.
Okay.
And a couple of them want to be certified from SHRM.
I was gonna ask, would that lead to certification, that's excellent.
So that is in the budget for next year for them.
Okay, that's good. And my final question, um. Since we've discussed these, the disparity in salaries, has a salary study ever been conducted within the city?
Years ago, there was one done, trying to think of who did it. It's sort of done, that's, that's the thing, it.
Okay.
It turned into a disaster.
Oh, really?
We got one page, a one-page document, and it was missing positions. I mean. Yeah.
Okay, so someone, there was a contract to conduct one.
Yes, we.
Okay.
It was.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we ended up with a one-page document for everything and.
And really gained nothing from it.
Nothing, I mean, we spent several thousand dollars and.
Oh, wow, so I guess there's. There's no, is, well, do you think there's an interest or there might be some value in possibly conducting?
I think it would be.
Since we, it seems to be um, an issue that everyone is experiencing.
It would be good to, to have one done, professional one done, but um, yeah, we went through the R free, RP process, we interviewed three different. Final vendors, and the one we picked seemed the best, and they gave the best presentation, but they gave the worst final product.
Sorry to hear that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I don't think I really have any, any questions, most of my questions have been asked. I did, I guess it's one question, do we have any um, any programs that lend to. Increasing like the quality of life of our employees, like or any incentive programs, like I know some organizations, they um, they have. Work schedules that allow them to have one Friday off every month or something like that, or um. Free gym memberships or something like that, do we do anything to help incentivize the retention of our employees?
As far as the time off employees, um, especially those that have been here a long time like me. I get thirty vacation days a year that I don't need to use, I maxed out in carryover, so I lose time every year. So, um, there is, they earn enough vacation and personal time. To take off time as needed, as far, and I'm pretty flexible in my office as far as, you know, if my employees need time off and, you know. Take a trip or, you know, just a couple of days vacation, I have been flexible about when. Someone, someone's children who have been sick, well, the one now, she's the only one with a child, and she can work from home, and she, she needs to. But because we're paper, it's very difficult to work from home. And or, if you're going away for a couple of days and take a laptop, I mean, I can't do it. Because I need to see the documents in front of me, because looking at the computer screen, it just doesn't work. But they earn enough time, I, the city is very good with um, as far as what people earn as for vacation and personal time, you know, three days a year. And you get twelve sick days a year. So, and the max on, on vacation time, I think is after fourteen years, you, it's thirty days a year.
Okay, well, one, I'm sorry to hear that you're not able to take your vacation time, uh, you know, work-life balance is very important. It's, it's important, especially when it comes to retention, I think as we're looking at the, the next generation of workers, we have to start looking at that work-life balance a little more. And some of those incentives outside of just um, vacation or, or PTO, uh, what else can we do to incentivize people to come on? Um, and then to stay on with the city, uh, as, as we heard from the solicitor's office, we're losing people uh, left and right, especially to the state government. Obviously, they're a large employer in our area, but I think uh, as a city as a whole, it's important for us to start looking at what we can do to incentivize people to come here. And to stay here, and I think uh, the reality is, and then the world we live in now, it's more than just pay. You know, it's, what can we do to increase that quality of life uh, for people so that they want to be here? And feel like that it fits their life and their lifestyle, so I think that's something we can, can look into. I don't know the answer to it, but I, I definitely think that as we're moving into a new, new world, a new age, it's important for us to look at some of those things.
I think it, our workload will ease up once we migrate to Tyler. Because uh, such as Sarah, our payroll manager, she works a tremendous amount of hours. She's there as much as I am, early weekends, you know, but just because of how we have to. She has to manually go through all the time sheets for the entire city. So, you know, and check for errors, and then upload them into another system. So that she can make sure everyone gets a check. So once we're with Tyler, hopefully that will be streamlined and it will allow her more time to take off. And what we've been doing, um, Vince is our deputy director, he's been cross-training with Sarah, and she was able to take some time off this year. Because he was able to fill in.
Okay.
So, we tried, you know, we tried creative ways, um, I tried cross-training everyone so that if someone is out. That the work keeps getting done, and, but now we have two. Employees that have only been here eight months, and now we are gonna have two new employees, and it's gonna, it's like starting over.
Right. So hopefully, um, Tyler Technologies is able to, to answer a lot of the issues that we have, especially because it does seem like. A lot of our um, standard operating procedures throughout the city are kind of antiquated and need to be updated. Obviously, we're looking to increase the technology and that should help, but uh, it's important for us to also look at, at everything as a whole and look how we can get up to speed. This is not just for HR, this is the, the city in general, um, and part of that is looking at um, the budget, not just now. Obviously, we're on budget season, but it's also looking at the budget as the year goes, and I'm looking at what's underspent, so we don't have large surpluses at the end of the year. And we use that money to get us up to speed so that we can provide the, the best services for the residents of the city. As well as um, services for our employees, so. Thank you for all the work that your office does, I know that you guys have been very busy this year, um, with all the new hires that the city have been bringing on. Uh, so I appreciate it, and I appreciate your dedication to the city.
Oh, thank you.
I believe that is everything, unless anyone has any comments or questions? All right, we will move on to the Bureau of Financial Management. And if you could introduce yourself, um, give a review, an overview of your department, maybe some of your goals or accomplishments for this year. Uh, and then go over any questions that have been previously answered um, through email or asked through email, and then we'll go down the line for questions.
Excellent, thank you Chair Green, appreciate it. Madam President, thank you for entertaining. Um, my name is Marita Kelly, and I'm the Director of Financial Management, often referred to as the Director of Budget and Finance. Because it's a lot of moving parts in the finance office. One of the things that is an, an interesting challenge for the um. Finance operation is that we are still under two oversight boards. Um, we're under the D C E D Financial, uh, Municipalities Financial Recovery Program. Which is overseen by Madra Clay, who's our recovery coordinator, and we're also overseen by the um, Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority. Led by um, Audrey Carter, I had an afternoon meeting at four o'clock with the ICA. Um, it, it takes an extraordinary number of hours to provide um, information to those two oversight boards. Uh, once a quarter, we have a extensive financial management and operational management report to the Commonwealth Court. That involves Brian spending multiple hours providing not only monthly reports, but a comprehensive report quarterly. And then I have to go through the strong plan and update as to what our operations are in terms of aligning ourselves with the strong plan as it currently exists. In addition to that, we produce a five-year financial management plan um, to the ICA. Um, once a year, also taking a considerable amount of time, and uh, we're happy to accommodate. But it, it, uh, it is an extensive um, operation. Um, this year, we're very proud to say that led by gentleman over there in the corner, Mr. Brian McCutcheon. We will be going live, or we anticipate going live with the General Ledger Software Component of Munis, uh, Tyler Munis. And that involves um, all of the uh, purchasing mechanisms, all of the um, accounting mechanisms. And um, so Brian's been the lead, but Hillary and Tim have uh, spent extensive hours, oh, hundreds of hours. Um, in addition to their work to uh, help to implement Munis and go live. Um, on January one, so I just wanted to give my staff credit for that, because it's been, it's been a yeoman's job. Um, this is also our second budget of the year, a little unusual to produce two budgets. We're trying our best to have one that's error-free, but with as many um, moving parts as there are and relatively new staff. We're trying our best to, to give you the very best product we can, we, we realize there'll be a few bumps in the road, but we're happy to accommodate as needed. We uh, we just very much enjoy what we do, I have a terrific team. And um, I think that um, we provide a, a service to, to not only the citizens of Harrisburg, but. Um, particularly to the mayor and to the city council, and um, we are, we would be happy to even do more, more quarterly reporting, as you mentioned. Um, President Bowers, um, and I know that we have our mid-year report which we provide to you. And uh, so that's sort of an update of, of my operation, I shouldn't say my, our operation in the financial management. And it's just been a joy and a pleasure to um, to stand at the helm um, with such um, strong and capable individuals. That work with me and for me. I have a few questions that uh, that have been asked, um, I'll read the question and then uh, read. I have a few questions that, that have been asked. I'll read the question and then read the answer. When do you, when do you intend to fill the finance analyst vacancy? To be honest with you, I intended to fill it a year ago. We've had several candidates. Both candidates accepted the job, both turned the job down. They had better options. So it's been an enormous challenge because that means Brian has no help with the auditor, very little. And he's had to painstakingly, I mean, we assist where we can, we provide as much information as we can, but he, he being the primary accountant along with Alicia have really had to step up to the plate. They've had two vacancies in their operation, so it's been a little tough, but, but as many of you know, if you know Brian, he's, he's up to the task and he's done a great job. We do intend to fill this position the second quarter, hopefully by April first. Luckily for me, I opened my computer a week ago and there's three extraordinary candidates for this position. One being a CPA who's retiring from the Commonwealth. So, so, so maybe there's a little light at the end of the tunnel that we might be able to finally fill this position with a competent, capable individual, which will then be duly beneficial to you and to the city as we move forward with the General Ledger software implementation. So we're really hopeful about that. I think my team is very diverse. One-third of my team is, is from a minority status. And I have the two males, two of the six. One is black, African-American, and one is white. I have four females out of six. One is black, African-American, and three are white. I wouldn't say that we're fluent in our bilingual, but I know that Alicia does speak Polish and I speak Italian. I was raised in an Italian family where my grandparents spoke only Italian in the home, so. So, but I will say it's a little trick because it's Southern Italian and Southern Italian is a little different than Northern Italian. But, but we do have that op, that wonderful option that we have some, some secondary languages in our operation. And that's pretty much my report unless, but certainly you'll have some questions. I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. I do have a couple of questions to get started off with. When looking at the budget, it looks like the consulting line item, there was a pretty hefty increase there.
Oh, yes.
As well as the miscellaneous contracted service line item.
Yes, well, of course, our audit is always expensive because we follow the GASB requirements and thereby following the federal GASB Accounting, Government Accounting Standards Board proclamations. Our accounting costs, you know, are quite steep. One thing that the mayor has passed, passed me with is to develop a strong capital improvement plan, that's really a capital improvement plan, five to seven to ten years. And so the goal is to hire a professional financial management consultant. To be honest, this is the type of work I did in, in some of my prior jobs. But I, I know enough people and enough consultants that I think we can bid this out properly and, and find excellent, excellent candidates. And I think this, as I explained to the mayor, knowledge is power and the same with you, knowledge is power. If you have this extensive data that tells you, you know, what the age of the facility is, how long it'll take to repair it, same with our, our rolling stock, what the age of the fire trucks are and so forth. So we're really hoping to bring you a much, much, much better product, not only with the budget and hopefully errorless, but also that you not only have an operating budget, but a capital budget that's true and honest and, and provides a great deal of information to you. When I worked for the City of Houston, Texas, they actually, in the budget office, we actually produced an operating budget and we produced a capital budget. Well, a city this size, that's the fifth largest city in the United States, we couldn't do that. What we can do is really add a, a major component of the capital to this operating budget. And I think that will be, again, knowledge is power and it'll provide to you some of the best information we can, we can attain.
I appreciate that. I know we had had a conversation a couple of months ago about capital budgeting and really creating that, that plan so that we can have a map of what the city, where we're at now and where we're looking to go. I think it's important, especially as 2023 is supposed to be the year of getting debt-free. We have to start looking forward and, and looking at where we want to intentionally spend our funds at so that they give us the, the best use possible over the longest period of time. So I think really capital planning is an important project for us to, to work on. I'm glad to see you included that in this budget.
And also keep in mind that will, that plan will allow us to look at the financing. Obviously, we'll need a financial advisor separate from that, but what the plan does is it actually says if you, you need to invest two and a half million dollars into X, I don't know what it would be, it would tell you how to go about financing that project and what's the least possible cost. Lucky for this city, despite the oversight boards, they've actually been to your benefit because now you're one of the firmest, solid-standing communities in Pennsylvania because you have had the opportunity to really recover, really come on strong and through your leadership and the mayor's leadership, really have a firm footing to move forward. And every financial advisor that I've consulted with professionally and non-professionally, I mean professionally and off the, you know, just a phone conversation, they're like, you guys are ripe, you, you'll have a great credit rating. So I think if more than one is saying that to me, that's true. And I think that that's the right direction to go. And this helps to have that because then it says, we're not just haphazardly deciding how to spend our capital, we're doing it wisely, intently, and we're judiciously. And I think that will be really helpful to, to the citizens and the taxpayers of this city.
Thank you. I definitely agree with you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for questions. My lollipop tells me I'm supposed to start. So my far right here was Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have any questions. It was asked, it was about the increased services that you answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
You're welcome. And thank you for the job you're doing.
Happy to be here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mattson.
Uh, no questions for me if I think of any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Bowers.
I don't have any questions. The questions I submitted were answered, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Majors.
Thank you. No major, no major questions. I'll just have to talk with someone. I could work just on some of the position controls and some of the numbers that are in there in terms of anniversary dates. That's it. Nothing major technical. This is more technical, not budget-related.
May I add that when you were asking about training, every one of my staff members is a member of the Government Finance Officers Association of America and Canada and a member of the Government Finance Officers Association of Pennsylvania. And every one of them attends training with your continuing professional accountancy credits. So, so they themselves could study to be a CPA down the road because they're gaining these credits, but they're also gaining the knowledge of accountancy and auditing and financing and budgeting and so forth. So I'm sorry I was remiss in not mentioning that earlier. I did have a note, but I was remiss. Please excuse me.
No, it's okay. Thank you for sharing.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you Chair Green. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Kelly, once again, and for your work for the city. Just a brief question with the integration with the new software coming in the new year. Do you feel it fills all your needs in your department? If not, what would be those holes?
Well, interestingly enough, this software is actually designed to be a general ledger software, so we're sort of the winners.
Yeah.
What happens with general ledger software is often, in this case with Munis, is then it has these branches off to these other systems to go with codes and, and, and HR and, and police and fire. But as you heard last night, it's not a perfect match because no software is really a perfect match. It's really matched to be the financial foundation, but, but we wish, you know, always wished that it could be a little more adjacent to, but we did include every member of the directors in our meetings. Even in the prior years when I was the Act Forty-seven Coordinator, they involved me to some degree. So I do think it's a very good software and I think we'll get an excellent return on our investment. However, it's not perfect and there will be some, there will be times where we have to, to augment the software as the police and fire mentioned last night because of the unique nature of police and fire and particularly the unique nature of the city because it's a very, very full-service city. So, so you might be only fifty thousand, but you act like a city of you, like the city of Houston, who's the fifth largest in the United States because you're a full-service city.
Thank you for that. No further questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for answering our questions. And then thank you to, for your, to your department for all your hard work throughout the year. I know that, that we've met several times throughout the year. I know that I've seen Brian in here for many late nights as well as Tim and all you guys, just making sure that, that we're staying on track and producing this budget and getting everything in order. So I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you very much, Chair Green.
All right. I think we get to move on to the next, which would be the Bureau of Communications.
There we go. Here I am at the end of the night. I'm the one that had the PowerPoint, so you would indulge me a second as I get this set up? I do have just some brief remarks and this, uh, joining PowerPoint for you to follow along with, so please indulge me. Thank you. President Bowers, Vice President Green, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the Bureau of Communications and how we plan on taking our small but mighty operation to new heights in 2023. What I'm hoping to do for the next few minutes is convey that the work being done by the communications team is more than just a budget number. Before I go any further, I do want to publicly thank my team, which has bought into our vision. I have asked Melissa Mahones Ortiz, Asher Johnson, and Emily Speck to work harder and think more creatively than they have at any other point in their careers. T J Aberminus and Antoine Brown have been busier with extra traffic downstairs and phone calls. This is all part of how we are trying to make the city of Harrisburg more accessible to its community than ever before. Twenty twenty-two saw a big leap forward in how the city of Harrisburg communicates with its citizens and its press. We've put together a few relevant statistics tonight to highlight what we are doing and why it's working and why at the very least, we're hoping to maintain financially what we have in place, if not increase our budget in some areas altogether. Since I started as Communications Director on March seventh of this year, we have posted a hundred and six articles to HarrisburgPA.gov's website. That is a one hundred and four percent increase in nine months than what we saw over the previous year. We've made more of an effort to turn our YouTube channel into more of a home for content. In the last nine months, we've posted a hundred and sixty-eight videos compared to ninety-five in the previous year. That's a seventy-seven percent increase. We've increased subscribers by nearly two hundred people and have had nearly forty thousand seven hundred views on our videos in 2022. That's up eighty-one percent from 2021. As many of you know, we've also started a TikTok account this year and in short time, we've picked up nearly four hundred followers. These videos allow the city to connect to a younger generation of residents who may not use other forms of social media. For as much as we've progressed using TikTok this year, it's also the area that has significant, significant room for growth. But Facebook continues to be our big social media driver, nearly thirteen thousand followers, including more than two thousand new ones this year. Our content in 2022 has reached nearly six hundred and twenty thousand people according to Facebook analytic data. Our Facebook page has received nearly forty-one thousand five hundred visits this year. That is a one hundred forty-four percent increase over the previous year. One of our main goals this year was to make WHBG TV twenty more of a content factory than just your run-of-the-mill public access TV. We've started multiple original content series, including What's the Word Harrisburg, Studio Sessions on Channel Twenty and Passport Harrisburg. We're also in the process of doing something that we have never done before and that is produce a four-part docu-series called Becoming the Change, which involves us taking you behind the scenes of how police trainees ultimately become officers through their six-month academy. We believe this, along with other videos and stories that we've done with Harrisburg Bureau of Police, will help improve community relations with citizens and the officers. Melissa Mahones Ortiz has taken charge and restarting our once-defunct city newsletter. She publishes it weekly, updating our nearly thirty-eight hundred subscribers in both English and Spanish on current events and the latest news in the city. In addition to that, she serves as the city's chief translator and throughout the year has assisted parks and recreation, codes, mercantile, and zoning on helping residents who do not understand English. We've also restarted city press briefings with local members of the media. As most of you are aware, due to my previous career, transparency in local government is incredibly important to me. I believe the city's positive relationship with the press is mutually beneficial because at the end of the day, if the city is honest and transparent and the press is fair, the people who ultimately win are our residents. What we've accomplished in 2022 was done in spite of serious shortcomings, which we hope to address in this budget. We are still broadcasting in seven-twenty P, which is considered pre-two thousand seven standards. Our WHBG control room is being held together by duct tape and bubble gum, our tricaster, the machine that changes the cameras back and forth, has already broken on us once this year and it's only a matter of time before the one in council chambers breaks as well. We've been able to purchase new camera equipment, but right now we are essentially putting premium fuel into a Pinto. The people of Harrisburg deserve a communications team which will meet their needs and while the statistics prove that we are off to a good start, we're looking forward to doing even more in 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you very much. I am going to open it up to my colleagues with questions unless we have free, or we actually do, we have some questions that were asked before. If you could go over those questions and the responses.
Sure. Can you provide an overview of the city's communication needs that are addressed in the budget? There is additional money that we will hopefully have for supplies that will help keep WHBG up on industry standards for visual communications. We'll be able to update parts of our control room, which right now have outdated equipment. Do you intend to fill the new digital context, content producer role? If so, which quarter in 2023? We would like to fill that as we feel it's needed to keep up with digital reliance or reliance on digital communications, but given what's been, you know, I guess allocation of funds for the city's budget, I've been informed that we won't be filling that position in 2023. The production technician part-time role was one that I believe was zeroed out in the 2022 budget. That's a former position. We're not intending on filling that role. The Bureau's diversity complement. We have five people within the communications bureau. One is a Peruvian immigrant. We have two women, one black male. Are any current employees in the Bureau bilingual? Yes, as I mentioned earlier, Melissa Mahones Ortiz is currently our multilingual communications manager. I believe she is fluent in French as well as Spanish.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any further questions, starting to my far left with Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you Chair Green. Thank you Director Mazel for joining us this evening. A little bit back, we had spoken about the possibilities of virtual options for residents that may not be able to come in and attend. Where are we in that process and or what software do you feel would be efficient to do so?
Sure. That is, we were in discussion with a group that came in here, provided us a quote with simply way too much money. We looked at the budget that we had, realized that given what we need to do in order to make this work, it's something that has to be addressed in the 2020 given what we need to do in order to make this work, it's something that has to be addressed in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Um, so our bureau will be working with, uh, Steve Bortner's, uh, IT bureau, um, to pool funds, to come up with new equipment that would make council more accessible virtually for residents.
Thank you for that. Uh, as you know, it'd be really, really important for our senior citizens as well as any, um, handicapped or disability, um, residents with disabilities that can't come in on a weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, um, to enjoy it and give participation at home. So I look forward to that. In any way we can assist, please let us know. Uh, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors.
Yes, thank you. Um. So just want to make sure, and I recognize the, the hard work everyone does in your department. I, I still, I don't know if the increase in the capital equipment, that's enough just to update some of the current equipment that we do have, or what would be a realistic outlay for updating the equipment in terms of what you have in your control room, what we have here. You know, again, you said we're running on industry standards from two thousand and seven, um, and a, um, a modest increase in terms of minor capital equipment doesn't seem like it would be sufficient or, you know, a complete re-overhaul of, the communications infrastructure for.
The, yeah, the, the reality is what we need to outfit the studios in a way that would bring it up to twenty twenty-two standards, uh, would cost uh, tens of thousands, if not well over hundreds of thousands of dollars. New cameras, new lighting, things of that nature. Um, that's where Comcast comes into play and, you know, needing to restart conversations on, uh, the contract with Comcast. Because at the end of the day, I mean, WHBG is provided to residents via Comcast. Um, so they're the ones that, and I'm not sure of the date. It, it predated me by many years. But I'm not sure when Comcast first came to the table and, and helped outfit the WHBG studios. But, um, that's something that this is, they helped provide the funds for that. Uh, and, uh, we're hoping to get that rolling again. Uh, that needs to be a priority in, in two thousand and twenty-three.
And if you haven't had any, you or the administration, have you had any conversations? I mean, I think as a resident knowing, I mean, truly, they're the only game in town. If you want cable or that, I mean, a lot of cable service in the city. Um, so are we having any conversations with them?
We are under an expired franchise agreement, which in the last year, last administration, just sort of went nowhere. Um, in getting, getting that to the, uh, goal line. And this year, we just have not had that ability to, to pick up that negotiation. We actually had counsel out in Pittsburgh who does this. Um, but we got so far, there was a very detailed study done that ended up giving us very little results in terms of, um, you get, you get more money back if, if they're, if, if your subscriber list isn't correct. So we had to do an audit of what, what, what our last ten years were. Um, and that was a very long process. They got very little, and frankly, we just haven't gotten back to the table. You know, we have a wish list of items. Um, not shockingly, the first reaction to it was, well, that sounds like an expensive wish, wish list items. And they were doubtful Comcast would, would come on board for the big numbers, um, for what we have. So.
Okay. Okay. So I guess I just look forward to, uh, being able to learn more and hear more about those conversations. Cause again, you know, we did, we do not have a lot of other options for television service in the city of Harrisburg with them, you know, having, um, access to all of our residents and, and we should be doing something a little bit better there.
It, i- if, if I may, we would obviously love to be able to have something with Comcast where they throw us a boatload of money and we can get up to industry standards with, uh, with, with what we are doing. What we are filming in outside of the studios is all, I mean, we just recently, in the last few weeks, got a, a batch of equipment. Uh, that is, that is quality, high-definition material, anything that we put up on our YouTube channels, high-definition material. I realize that, um, that is not, you turn on the TV and whatnot, but one of the goals that I had, knowing that, knowing that we had limitations, um, to no fault of our own, with this physical studio itself, and knowing that more and more people in this day and age are going to their devices. You wake up in the morning, you pick up your phone. You're looking at a computer during the day. More and more people are using, uh, digital content. Uh, it's why we wanted to focus on growing our YouTube channel, uh, maintaining high social media output. Uh, because more and more people are going to that, we felt that we would get more access from residents, uh, through our digital media, which is why the content that we are putting out there is quality, industry-standard material. It's when we put together something that airs on Channel Twenty. If someone's watching council chambers right now, uh, they're watching it in seven-twenty P. But if they're watching it on YouTube, it is high definition. It's, it's one of those kind of weird dynamics that I don't even fully understand, but that's the reality. So all we can do right now is continue to put out good quality looking and, uh, feeling content. And on our digital channels and hopefully continue to make inroads with Comcast to, um, help them update our studio the best that they can.
Okay. Thank you. And then if there's any way us as council can work with your office on any of the other projects. And many of us would be willing to. So, thank you. No further questions.
Keep in mind that the IT, um, office will be presenting in a few days, and they will tell you about the arrangements for the public meetings that, um, that you have, um, requested that the planning commission be filmed. And so there is money in the budget, in the IT budget to, um, upgrade this particular facility for those meetings. So you'll be pleased to talk to Mr. Bortner. He'll have a little more detail. Um, I didn't, um, give Mr. Mazel the heads up on that, so my apologies to you.
No, it's fine.
But, uh, but that, that's one bright, by bright light in the midst of a bleak one, when there's not a lot of money for this particular type of, uh, effort. So just wanted to fill that, fill you in on that.
No, absolutely. And, uh, no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers.
Thank you. So just to clarify, um, because I think we've talked about equipment in the studio. Um, you're saying that the IT budget will address technology in our council chambers. Okay. So that means, um, the equipment in the back, the cameras and the microphones will be included in that?
Well, he can give you greater detail as to exactly what it is, and he'll be happy to do that. But, but, uh, you had asked him last year. He said he'd get you a price. He did do that. And in the meantime, he's ordered the equipment and it's anticipated to be delivered in, uh, in the early part of two thousand and twenty-three. I don't know the specific date, but he'll be happy to fill you in when he.
Oh, that's great. I'm really glad to hear that. Um, I can't tell you, well, Mr. Mazel knows. Uh, many people are watching us. They're viewing as we've seen from the uptick in our statistics for the year. And, but they're having difficulty hearing us, um, through our microphone. So I, I'm glad to hear and hopeful, um, that we can resolve some of our technology issues, uh, next year within the chamber.
That's our hope.
Thank you.
Councilman Madison.
Regarding, it seems, you know, the future, uh, for communicating with younger people is on TikTok. Uh, I enjoy TikTok. Uh, as a viewer, I don't post much content because I'm, I don't think I'm that interesting, but.
You, you would be an excellent content producer.
Thank you. What, what is the content you're putting out on, because I follow the page, but I haven't checked on it recently. And I guess what makes you pick that content? And why do you think younger people, particularly Gen Z, would be interested in it?
It's a mix of, uh, what you would consider, uh, behind the scene. It's a, it's essentially a lot of the content that we are already putting out on our YouTube channel, just reformatted, uh, to put at on another platform that skews much younger. That, that is essentially it. We do, TikTok also allows for a lot quicker videos that you could put together within thirty seconds. A lot of times that would be behind the scenes, just giving people a glimpse into city government that they normally wouldn't get a chance, uh, to see. But we also, uh, take ninety-second, two-minute-long videos. TikTok now allows for five-minute-long, six-minute-long videos, which is crazy. We don't get into that. But, uh, because most people's attention spans aren't going to last that long. But we try to keep our TikTok content to two minutes or under. And a lot of times it's showing people what is going on in the city, uh, sharing, um, video of, hey, this, the, the, the bash at the brownstone event. Here's what you missed, uh, the tree planting, uh, that is taking place, uh, on Forester and Nineteenth or, or something like that. Here, here's what, here's what's going on in the city right now that, um, you're not necessarily watching the news to see ABC twenty-seven or CBS twenty-one there. Um, you're not reading the newspaper. You're scrolling through your phone, and here's what's going on in the city. Here's the good news that's happening in the city right now. So, uh, that's essentially what we're using TikTok as a platform for.
Uh, follow question to that is, there's always, uh, I guess, concerns over operated by a foreign government and they do various things. I, just as a city government, should you, you're safe? Or are we worried about stuff like that? I know TikTok's widely used by other government agents.
Um. The best way I can respond to that is I have no concern because the city of Harrisburg, as much as I would love us to have a bigger following on the account, um, we are barely scratching the surface in terms of, um, what would be considered flagged by other, I mean, we have just under four hundred followers, um, which is, which is great, considering we started this maybe six months ago. Um, we're not nearly at the point where I personally would be concerned that, uh, the Chinese government is, uh, paying attention to what we're doing here.
Got it. Cool. All right. I was just kind of curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mazel. Thank you for being here today.
Good evening.
Um, I had a, a few questions. One was kind of request, or I don't know if you can do it, but I know you talked about the, uh, YouTube link. Mm-hmm. And I was just wondering, is that something you can send to us so we can share it? I mean, I'm sure you have, but is there like a link that we can, uh, that you can copy and paste and can share it with on our own Facebook pages or whatnot, just to have people being able to click on it and subscribe?
Sure. I mean, I, I'll, I'll be happy to, to send each of you an email with it, uh, but in the meantime, just for the record, it's
Okay. Thank you. That was a lot. Couldn't get it good, but yes. Fingers don't go that fast. Um. What other doc documentaries are you interested in doing? I, I love the one about the, you know, police officers. I think that gives a, a great insight, like you said, and can build some, um, community relations. So what other documentaries have you all been interested in maybe partaking in for the city?
It's funny you say that because, um, I, I've never helped produce a documentary before. So this is, this is a new ground, and I know Asher Johnson and Emily Speck have been working their tails off on this, and we're only about halfway through. Uh, we're really excited to see where this kind of ends up and when they graduate in March. Uh, that being said, um, I've always had a passion for filmmaking documentaries, just on a personal level. And I had a conversation in June or July of two thousand and twenty, uh, with Lenwood Sloan, who, who we all know. And he was telling me about, um, and, and I'm, I'm afraid about reciting this into the record out of the, uh, fear that someone's going to steal this. But, because no one else is, is aware of this, but he was telling me about the, um, back in eighteen, this was during the, uh, Juneteenth celebration during two thousand and twenty and how the, I, I, one of the AME churches here in Harrisburg, when the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, a group of black men got together and basically formed a group that went down to Washington to, uh, protest to President Lincoln that it was, thank you, but this is not enough. The, the Emancipation Proclamation is not enough. It doesn't ensure everyone's freedom. And that conversation started at a church in Harrisburg. And if you, I'm, this is the first I'd heard about it, so I did some Googling and, and news lookup. And the only article which exists is a blurb in a, whatever the Harrisburg newspaper was in the eighteen-sixties. And there was like three lines that said, this group of men performed here. So this, yes, this actually happened. And, uh, there, he, he performed, uh, Mr. Sloan, um, has done his own research on it and has spoken to, um, uh, family members of those people who were involved. Um, and so this would be a really difficult, challenging project, but one that, uh, let's hope that, uh, this first documentary goes well, and then we can, uh, see how that would go because it's a heck of a story and one that I think, uh, our residents would love to hear.
I would myself. So that's very interesting. I, I hope that that comes together. Um, but I would love to see that. And I think you'll think of so many other documentaries, but I think, um, I love that idea. Because I think we all need to learn a little bit more about Harrisburg and about our entities that are here. Um, I, I think we're in that world where people want to see what's happening. They want that transparency.
I, and, and I think one of the exciting things is we have someone in, uh, Emily, who started back in, uh, the start of August, who has a film background from college, um, has, uh, helped put together short films, uh, when she was in school. It's something that I've talked to her about, and she's excited to kind of, uh, do, which is why the project that she's working on right now with Asher is, uh, something that's really exciting for both of them.
Great. Well, thank you. My last question was a few residents had, um, requested or had an idea of, is there any way, um, I guess it's a little bit of having an app for the city that pushes notifications, um, for like street cleaning, snow removal, um, or any other updates, kind of like what your newsletter is, but, um, pushes notifications. Um, or just some type of, I think one was called Constant Connect. That was one, um, one, uh, idea resident gave me, and it just kind of is that technology or digital way of updating the city on a constant basis. I don't know if that's something we can look into or do, but I said I would bring it up.
Yeah, a- absolutely. I love the idea of having an app. Uh, it's something I need to discuss with, uh, Steve Bortner and, and the IT department to see, uh, the logistics of, of putting an app together. Uh, but a hun- it's something that I've, I've thought about before as, um, as, it's something I thought about early on, but then I had to step back and say, all right, you're new to this. Let's get through two thousand and twenty-two first and, and then two thousand and twenty-three rolls around. Let's get ambitious with some of these projects. So that's definitely something that I've already written down as something that I would like to accomplish in twenty-three.
Okay, great. I think, I don't know if it was President Bowers or, um, Councilman Majors. I feel like an app was discussed before. Okay.
We have talked about it before, uh, with Mr. Bortner. The issue, of course, was the mainframe. So I think once we migrate to Tyler, and there are apps that other city you, cities use where you don't have to build it from scratch. You just input the forms and information that you'd like to share. So we wouldn't have to build it from the ground up, but I think the issue is, uh, the mainframe right now. So once we migrate and we're all the way up to date, I think then we can, uh, really have conversations about that.
That's so true. And I don't know the name of all the apps, but that's true. There are some. I only know Constant Connect because that's one that a resident gave me that was used out of Baltimore. Uh, Baltimore uses that. And then there's another one. They keep sending it to me on my government, um, email, and it's something.gov. Bo-Gov, something. I don't know. If I ever figure out, if I see it again, I'll send it to you because of course I can't find it now.
Well, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Majors?
Just, uh, just one. Uh, in terms of our social media, uh, I know before, in the previous administration, which it was a so, there was discussion about a social media policy and who's able to use and access. That's still something that's in place with the city in terms of who has access, you know, official access. who has access, you know, official access to City Harrisburg social media and then
Like who within the building can post? Yes, I mean, there, there is a, there's a list of not everyone in the city. I think there is maybe I wanna say six, seven, eight people who have access to posting to our Facebook and Twitter and, and next door links and things like that. It, it's pretty ca- closely kept.
Okay. And then um I know previously we had gotten any stats on the three one one. So is, is there any way you could provide um you know, an updated, not, not today, but just in a, you know, before our budget's up about stats on, you know, the number of uh reports that have come in through three one and, and you know, how, how quickly we're able to answer them and help deal with residents, um, you know, questions that come in through the three one ones.
We, we receive an average of thirty five calls a day on uh three one one. And, and it's not just three one one, it's also, you know, people who come into the city and, and receive that. So um we, as of yesterday, November twenty ninth, um, we've received eight thousand five hundred uh forty eight visits. Who have people who have checked into the iPad, um, and there's an average of twenty seven visitors per day.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one final comment. I wanted to note the AME church that you were talking about was Bethel AME Church, still in existence today. And um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you very much for your presentation tonight, as well as the information you provided, and thank you for all that you do for the city. Uh, I think that wraps it up for your department.
Thank you very much.
And last but not least, we have the Bureau of Grants.
Yes, good evening, um Chair Green and President Bowers. My name's Marita Kelly, the Finance Director. I'm here to present on behalf of Rebecca Volmer. Uh, Rebecca is um grant writer extraordinaire, might I add. She um has accomplished um nothing less than a miracle in that uh DCD, CDBG through the CARES Act money has provided thirteen million dollars to the, to the city of Harrisburg. Um, it's just an enormous award that uh we're very proud of. She also has on October thirty first, uh twenty twenty two, she was, the city was awarded. Uh, thanks to Mr. Hartman and Ms. Volmer, um six million dollars of RACP, which is a total of twelve million dollars for improvements to the uh FNB baseball field um as required by the Major League Baseball to upgrade the stadium. This is, this is the major step towards that direction. And Mr. Hartman and Mr. and Ms. Volmer were intricately involved in that, that application and the receipt and award, which we actually notified the department today that we are willing to accept the award. That, that's the opposite of the budget Commonwealth defense thing. And then uh in addition to that, the DCNR grants uh in excess of two million, um, I could go on and on. I will tell you, she's diligently working on the um, the President's bipartisan infrastructure bill and applying for federal um highway, bridge and um and um, and multiple other uh infrastructure grants. So we're very um, very, very pleased that Ms. Volmer has been part of our team and has just been so dedicated. She's been before you multiple times this year, so you know I'm being honest. And um, the good news is um, the mayor has granted the option for her to hire a um grant assistant who will also write grants. Now, in addition to that, um, um, we uh are able to, through the special assistant, the Finance Director, Ms. Smith Manning has also assisted um Ms. Volmer and myself with the gaming grants. She came, she hit the ground running. The day she started, we were submitting the gaming grants. And she's been an ultimate advantage as well as part of that grant writing team. So um, uh she has a very tiny budget, as you can see, in terms of her expenditure. She increased them a bit because she has another person she'll be buying paper for and staples and things like that. But, but uh fair, fairly modest increases that she has um presented. Um, the, the grant writer will be hired likely by April first. It, it's looking more and more like it's an internal hire, but we don't know yet. We're still working on interviewing and background checks and things like that. There are some external people interested in that position as well. But um, that's, it's kind of a small budget, kind of um unassuming. But um, but I just wanted to, to um acknowledge that her work is extraordinary, so to speak.
Thank you very much. Um, I think we can all agree that uh she is definitely an asset to the city. Um, glad to see that um we're looking to grow that department or that bureau uh because it, it's an asset to the city. Uh, she's brought in millions and millions of dollars uh for, for things uh here in the city. So glad to see that. Uh, I'm gonna open it up to my colleagues for questions, starting with Councilwoman Ra- Ross.
Thank you. I don't have any question at all. Um, well, Thomas Volmer said thank you and thank you for coming to present for her.
I certainly shall.
But she, she has done a great job and she's always so open to, um, you know, wanting to help and do more and finding answers. So very pleased with her.
Yeah, it's not unusual to find her or Brian at three in the morning on a Monday, uh morning after working all weekend.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Matsum.
Uh, yeah, I guess it's more like an admin question, so I don't even be able to answer it, I don't think directly, but it seems like a grants department almost pays for itself if you get really good people. So for every dollar we invest, we seem to get a pretty high return. I guess my question is, why not invest more in it? Outside of, I'm happy to see we're getting more staff, but why not go for like five grant writers or something? Maybe there's not enough grants out there, I don't know, but.
Well, I will add, she has a degree from Yale, so she
That doesn't hurt.
She's pretty impressive in terms of her knowledge and her, and she proofreads everything for the finance department because she's so excellent. And so does Ms. uh Smith Manning. She's excellent as well in terms of proofreading. But yeah, we couldn't agree with you more. I have to evaluate that. I wasn't expecting that thirteen million dollar hit this year, which is a great thing. But I wasn't expecting it, so I couldn't really prepare well to maybe add a whole position, but, but um you know, we certainly need to um, to look look i- i- in depth at this position as you, you talk about Ms. Ms. Bowers about evaluating employees for their, their return on their investment and they're just in, in general, their performance. And, and she's just done such an outstanding job, I can't uh thank her enough or, you know. She bought me coffee today. That doesn't seem quite fair, but uh, but she's a good team player and I'm grateful to have her. And we'll certainly take what you say under consideration. I'll speak with Mr. Hartman and, and the mayor in terms of the, the future budgets.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Just one question regarding the grants assistant position. Is there a job description?
She is developing that, but she needs to work with Joni because Joni has a special format that she needs. Because she's in the middle of submitting some grants right now, I didn't wanna put too much pressure on her, but we will get one for you and we'll have it to you by early next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors.
Uh, thank you. Um. Yes, well, I guess the first one is for um Chair Green. I do remember, recall us last year during, well, earlier this year, we were in budget discussing
Yes.
Providing.
So we discussed it, we added the position then, but then the administration requested that it was changed to a finance assistant.
Special assistant to the Finance Director.
Yes.
But of course, Ms. Volmer works directly underneath me, so when
Okay.
Ms. Smith Manning started, one of the first things she did was hit the ground with the grant writing. And then, of course, we moved into budgeting, so she's multi-talented, might I say? And so she was able to be diverse. And then we hope to have her back with Rebecca and myself in terms of activities as we move through the finance calendar that we have.
Okay. I, I just, I recall something, I just couldn't remember off the top of my head. And then the second piece is, um, again, the, the reason we're looking to begin funding in April is, is budget related?
It is. But also it's difficult to find the candidate. So, so what um Ms. Volmer explained to me, even if it was funded January one, because she wants to be painstaking and she wants to take time to examine the candidates. Well, a couple that we know already and some that she'd like to pursue further, maybe through some additional advertising. It would take her time to, to do the, the one or two uh interviews that she would like to have. I'd be with her, of course. And also to do the background check. The background check has been taking anywhere from ten to, to twenty one days or more, depending on circumstances.
Okay. And then, and just the thirteen million dollar hit you referenced was the
The CARES Act money that the CDBG had available. The DCD, CDBG, because normally we don't go through the Commonwealth because we're a direct entitlement. But because DCD, CDBG, Don Enrico had additional monies, she approached Ms. Volmer. Her team and her team said, well, we have these additional CARES Act money, we're gonna lose that we don't use. And so she went above and beyond the call of duty and came up with these parks projects and facilities projects. And she worked with Mr. Baker and so forth and, and she expected maybe two million, maybe three. She told me that's tops, that's all we're get, we'll get, and we were shocked to get more.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Go further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you. And once again, thank you ladies for being here this evening. Um, pretty much just echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, I do remember around February, she was ecstatic that we were bringing up, you know, expanding the department, getting her some help. So uh, Chair, if possible, would we be able to maybe speak with Ms. Volmer before uh everything's said and done? Perhaps, um, just to give more clarity or would that not be necessary?
I mean, if, if Ms. Volmer is available to come down and, and kinda tell us what's going on in her department, um, then sure. Any night will be fine. We can squeeze her into the agenda. Um, yeah.
I'm sure she'd be happy to do that.
Awesome. Thank you. Go further questions.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, thank you very much. Uh, I think that wraps us up for the uh committee business tonight. So I'm going to pass it back over to Count to President Bowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Just a few housekeeping rules in the event that there is somebody here that would like to offer public comment. You have two minutes to share your comment. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. Please state your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live.
Madam President, may the record reflect that there is no public to comment here tonight, so.
I still like to move forward with our practice as our agenda notes. Is there anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left, seeing and hearing no one. Okay, Vice President Green has a question.
It wa- it was, I could've just asked you, but um, it's, it's more uh asking, is the, the public comments email still available? Like, can people still email to the public comment email and is it being checked? Cause I was asked that question a few days ago.
So it is in the legal app that, so it's just being checked, as you guys tell me.
That is the question. Is it being checked? Because um, we may have people from the public that are looking to participate and we're not getting their comments. I don't know if, I don't know who has the password.
The email is active. I will say that any public comment received via email or any written form of public comment received is generally added to uh the meeting record for which the comments are being made. But I, this would be the Okay, I, that
So if we don't have a password, there may be seven months of public comments sitting in the inbox. Yes.
That's an IT question we can follow up with, Mr. Bortner. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments or concerns before we adjourn? Okay, hearing none. It's nine o'clock PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.